I will call the July 23 Planning Commission to order. Will everyone please stand and will Commissioner Lowery lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Everyone stand, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, roll call please.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Kettin, who is excused this evening.
Great, thank you. And this is the time we'll take some public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please call Again, that's 949-270-9165 to provide public comments on non-agenda items. First, we'll go to the community room. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items on the phone? All right, none there. I'm on to item number five, requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
None this evening.
All right, great. And consent items. Moving on to consent items, number one, that's the minutes of July 9th. And again, if you want to comment on this item, please call 949-270-8165. And are there any questions for the Commissioners? I know that Mr. Mosher did send some edits. And community room, anything? And anyone on the phone? Nope, okay. Anyone want to do a motion on those minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's comments.
Great. Second. Perfect. And are we voting by remotely today, or are we doing voice?
Clarville? Can you do, you could do the vote.
Yes, vote cast.
So on the computer?
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're going to move a little bit out of order, and we're going to hear item number three. That's the Shvetz Residential Subdivision, PA 2020-041, and the site location is 2400 Santiago Drive. Again, if you want to comment on this item, and I apologize to those who are in the audience or watching on TV that we're just skipping ahead, this should be a relatively quick item, and I'd like to just move forward with that, just so this can be moved on, so we have more time for the next item. So again, if you want to comment on this item over the phone, it's 949-270-8165. Staff, please, presentation.
Thank you Chair Wagen, and thank you to the Commission for being here tonight. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division. Tonight I'll be presenting the Shvetz Residential Subdivision, general plan amendment and tentative parcel map at 2400 Santiago Drive. So the request tonight is a tentative parcel map, there's an existing single-unit residential lot, and to subdivide that into two single-unit residential lots. This requires a general plan amendment to, because of the increase in density by one unit, and the general plan amendment is pursuant to the general plan policy LU 4.2, the prohibition of new residential subdivisions. I'll go over that later in my presentation. To be clear, that there is no development proposed in this project, it's simply the subdivision. So subject property is on Santiago Drive between Irvine Avenue and Tusson Avenue. Here's a few pictures of the property. This is the driveway that leads into the residence, which is in the back of the lot, and that's the existing single-family residence. And there's a large front yard, which is going to be the proposed second parcel on the property. Again, the property is there, and the surrounding uses are all single-residential lots. So this is the existing lot. As you can see, it's 300 feet deep by 120 feet wide, it's a very large lot. To the north of the lot is the driveway that leads to the residence in the rear, and that residence will remain as part of this project, there's no development proposed. This is the proposed configuration of the subdivision. Parcel 1 will be 15,000 square feet. Parcel 2 will be 21,000 square feet, and will include that driveway, which is 20 feet wide by 150 feet deep, and this satisfies the fire department's access requirements in case of emergency. And again, that residence will stay in the rear. So the general plan policy LU 4.2 states to prohibit new residential subdivisions that would result in additional dwelling units unless authorized by an amendment to the general plan. So staff has provided facts to support that general plan amendment. One is that we're adding one dwelling unit to the statistical area J5. There's no change in the land use, it just remains single-unit residential. The created lots from this subdivision would meet all the zoning code requirements regarding width and area. The configuration is consistent with the neighborhood, as you can see in the picture on the left. The lots to the north, they both have that same configuration with the flag-shaped lot and the rectangular lot. And there's also a Native American tribal consultation that's ongoing, it's required by Senate Bill 18, when there's a general plan amendment, so we're doing that right now. In terms of Charter Section 423, the general plan amendment does not require a vote, as it doesn't cross any thresholds in terms of density, intensity, or peak hour trips. It's a very minor addition, so there's no vote required. As I mentioned earlier, there's also a tentative parcel map, and in fact, staff has provided facts and supportive findings. The lot is suitable for one additional dwelling unit, as it's a very large lot, is located in an urbanized area, there's no sensitive vegetation or habitat here. The future development will comply with all applicable codes across different departments, and individual utilities will be required for the new parcel. So staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA under Class 3, and approve the general plan amendment and tentative parcel map. If approved by the Planning Commission, staff will complete the Native American consultation and schedule for the future city council hearing, which probably will be the second October meeting with the city council. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Rosin?
I do have one. The drive aisle at 20 feet, is that similar to the drive aisle to the west, those other two properties?
So the drive aisle to the west of those properties, I measured that, and they're 25 feet for both, for that one drive aisle that serves two, you know, two residences. So this will be wider, and the fire department, this will be wider, and the fire department requires 20 feet for a fire truck access.
Maybe I didn't hear, did you say that the existing ones are 25, and this one is 20?
Sorry, 25, there's one drive aisle that serves, let's go back to that picture. You see the flag, the, there's one drive aisle that serves, even though there's a line between it, there's actually one drive aisle.
Both properties.
It serves both properties, it's 25 feet wide, but this one will be 20 feet for one property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other Commissioners? All right, and I'll ask Commissioners to report any ex parte communications. Commissioner Rosin?
Vote by the property.
Commissioner Climen?
None.
Commissioner Klaasremeyer?
None.
Commissioner Elmore?
None.
Commissioner Lowery?
None.
And I spoke with one of the neighbors down the street, so that's as much as I'd And I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to give a presentation?
Yes, applicant has a presentation, and she's online.
All right, we see you. Staff, can you unmute her, or?
Sorry, I think it's Shawna, who has a presentation. Yeah, Shawna raising her hand.
Great.
Shawna's representing us.
Perfect. All right, Shawna, you're on.
Okay, hi, good evening. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So I, again Shawna Schaffner, CAA Planning, representing Ashley Shvetz in this application. Staff, I'd like to thank David Lee for his very efficient handling of this, he's done a great job. I do have a very quick PowerPoint presentation that I would like to provide, if that is suitable to the chair.
Yes.
Okay, great. Staff, would you please pull that up for me? Okay, so as Mr. Lee summarized, this is a residential subdivision, it is an existing large lot, and they are proposing to create two lots. So you see the project site here, off the by Irvine Avenue and Santiago Drive site, please.
Shawna, we're getting a little breakup here.
Okay, can we go to the next slide, please? Great, okay, so here's an aerial. You can see that this area is full of residential homes. Thank you, okay, so here we have, the project site is cleverly called Project Site. The starred lots that you see are very similar orientations of large lots that would be shared drives. And so there are six very similarly configured lots on the street of Santiago. Next slide, please. And here you can see how the parcels would be subdivided. The back parcel, where the existing residence is located, would be parcel 1, and the front parcel would be parcel 2. Next slide. And here you can see that in an aerial format, and again, you can see the properties up to the top left of the screen would share that configuration. And then I have one final slide, next slide, please. This is a summary of the requested action tonight. It's an existing 36,000 square foot lot, we're proposing two lots with 36,000 square foot lot area and all of that, yes, that's what you maintain in Santiago, it would be adequate, I mean, this is a department, this project, the general plan amendment would increase the number of residential lots in this area by one. We would urge the Planning Commission to approve this project tonight and send us on to the city council and the county's and area, if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks Shawna. I think most of us got that, there was a little, little cutout, but I'll ask our Commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant.
Apologies.
That's okay, we're working through all this right now, so it's, we appreciate your patience, too. I don't see any... Yeah, let's, I think what I'll do is I'll go to public comments in the community room. I do want to apologize that, I understand the projector is out, and with the staff that we have, there isn't many on duty to be able to fix that with IT, so I would recommend if you want to, and you can keep your social distance, that you could turn your chairs to the council chambers, there is a projector in here, but the sound obviously will be a different issue if you came outside, so try to accommodate that, but unfortunately, it seems like the projector will be down for the rest of the evening. So if you can keep your social distance, we invite you to steer your attention to us, and then we'll have an audience. So I will go to Mr. Mosher, who is in the community room.
Thank you Chair Wagen, members of the Commission. My name is Jim Mosher. As I tried to explain to you in writing this afternoon, I don't know how many of you saw that, because the comment was a little bit late, this is purportedly a general plan amendment. The implication of that is that what is being proposed is not consistent with our general plan it stands now, but after the amendment it will be consistent, yet nothing in this staff report or your resolution shows what is being amended in the general plan. I would assume a map is being amended, but there is no exhibit showing the map or how it will be changed. That's very unusual, I do not recall ever seeing a general plan amendment that didn't actually show what the amendment was. And as to the map, I did watch the presentation from the breezeway there, and I would note that Ms. Schaffner, whether it's relevant or not, has the parcels numbered opposite to the way they are numbered on the proposed map, which is on handbook page 27. I would also point out that the general plan policy that you're finding is consistent with says that prohibits new residential subdivision, so I personally do not know where the policy came from, or quite how we're finessing that. And then finally, I live quite close to this property, actually on the adjacent street, with a subdivision and the narrow, long entryway to it. As a neighboring resident, I would have some safety concern if the house in that rear lot was to catch fire or something of that sort. Would we understand the fire department is okay with the width of that drive, long driveway? Are they concerned if the resident at some future time should decide to put a gate on it? That would be my concern. Is there a prohibition against that? Do we need to have a condition so that there will be access to that rear property? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Anyone else in the community room? All right, I'll check with the phone calls, are there any phone calls? All right. And I did have a question for staff, this is a recommendation we're making to the city council, correct?
That's correct.
All right, great. And then one other question that I did have was, there was, on the map, I counted eight properties that surround this particular parcel. Is it out of the ordinary to ask if we could condition this to go to a zoning administrator for the development process of this application? So when we approve this, they, when they do the development plan, it goes to a ZA instead of just regular review, since there are so many neighbors that abut this property?
I think the condition can be crafted that it goes to the zoning administrator just for, almost receive and file, because it has to comply with code, we can't change what the code says, and it's, we don't have design review. So it can go to the zoning administrator with the proper public notice saying for more of a receive and file, and that it complies with code.
All right, so I'm just kind of thinking out loud on that property, just because it has so much, if you drive down that street, and I live near there, that whole other side has properties that are all like that, and as Ms. Schaffner showed us, there are some examples that it does that, but just kind of changes the configuration of the existing makeup, so I just, I thought it might be of interest to other residents that there's eight of them that abut this property, just so that they're aware of what's going on, and have the ability to bring something through a little bit more vetted process than just a typical review of a house being built. So those were just my side comments, but are there any other discussion from, for Okay, I'll close the public hearing on that, and bring it back to Commission for discussion, and see if there's a motion or any desire to move this forward.
I think I can go ahead and make that motion. This lot, even after subdivided, is much larger than most lots in Newport Beach. I will go ahead and make a motion to find this exempt from SEQA and adopt resolution PC 2020-028, approving general plan amendment number GP 2020-003, tentative parcel map NP 2020-007.
Okay. Any interest in sending it to the ZA for discussion, or is there any desire for that beyond myself?
What is it that you're trying to accomplish, just?
Just a little additional review when it goes forward by the zoning administrator, then it gives the ability, if the Planning Commission wanted to make a call for review on it, since it's something that we're making a recommendation on the general plan to the city council on, so it's a little different than the ordinary, it just gives a little extra level of scrutiny, and kind of keeps the community as, kind of as is, if there's significant changes. I know that if you look at that, that parcel, there's a lot of trees and a lot of shade that exists there, and, you know, I just want to make sure that the makeup and character of the neighborhood stays consistent to what it currently is, so, you know, I don't know if I reopen the public hearing and ask Ms. Schaffner if, you know, there's a, you know, kind of an idea of what things are going to look like, you know, moving forward. I guess, I guess from my perspective, living in that neighborhood and knowing what Santiago is, it's a whole host of homes that have significant lot sizes, think our HGTV Grand Marshall for the boat parade this year resides across the street, so she has a significant property there, and just the way that the makeup of that neighborhood is, I'm just kind of trying to see if we can at least preserve it and prevent something that doesn't kind of fit with the character of that neighborhood. So I'll reopen the public hearing, Ms. Schaffner, if you have any discussion on it.
Sorry, from the city attorney, do we, do we leave the motion sort of dangling, or?
That's fine, if we wanted to go ahead and reopen it and just see, get comment from Ms. Schaffner on it, then we can go ahead and do that.
Thank you Chair Wagen. I think that the city's, you know, internal checks for single-family home construction are very thorough, and I would say that if the residence were proposed in the future that met all of the city's very stringent guidelines, compared to size and setback and height limitations, and was determined by staff to be appropriate for that sized lot, then I would request that we don't have an added condition to require staff time to send it to the ZA when there's not much that I think the city zoning code would allow the ZA to do at that point. I think that that could create some confusion. Certainly, if a residence that were out of scale with the neighborhood, or even just so large that it required a site development review permit were necessary, then, then that type of proposal would certainly come back for public hearing and review by the appropriate authorities. So I would request that that's not a condition that's added tonight.
Great, thanks. I will let your motion stand and not modify it, because I don't sense that I have the votes anyway, if I wanted to proceed with that, but...
I certainly understand what you're trying to accomplish, I just don't, I don't know that you're going to get there with a ZA-level review, and I, I would sort of concur with the applicant's consultant here, in that the city's process is going to vet that, the neighbors will be noticed, they'll have opportunity to comment, and I don't see anything going forward that wouldn't have buy-in, so.
Sure, no, I appreciate those comments, Commissioner Climen. I'll reclose the public hearing, too, so I don't get any looks over here, but I'm happy to, to not push that any further, so if I have a second, then we'll... You have a second from me. Great. All right, we'll call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Just know there are neighbors that are keeping an eye on this, so please be courteous to them.
Excellent, well done, and congratulations on the appointment, Chair Wagen, very exciting.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, so we'll come back now to item number two, and this is item, the short-term lodging LCP amendment, PA 2020-048, site location is citywide. Again, if you want to comment on this item, please call 949-270-8165. Again, that's 949-270-8165. Reminder, though, please mute your television, as there is a 40-second delay, so mute your television when you get called on. Staff, are you ready? Simone, you're tackling this for us.
I am, I am going to handle this.
All right.
Thank you, thank you Chair Wagen, and Commissioners, good evening. Simone Georgis, your Community Development Director. Good news, I think we did get the TV screen up and running in the community room, so we do have visual in there, so thank you to Avery and the IT staff there. I'm going to go ahead and handle this presentation. So just, what I'm going to do is really going to talk about kind of a lot of background about short-term lodging, and then get into why Planning Commission is looking at it. So on the screen there, you have a lot of these kind of branding icons, and, you know, Airbnb, Craigslist, great rentals, so just for the Commission's and the, and the public's knowledge, I mean, there's over 50 to 100 different platforms that rent out short-term lodging, and so there, it's a robust business, and, you know, the city recognizes that, and, you know, the city's not trying to take away short-term lodging at all. So, but why are we addressing short-term lodging? Well, the, the council and the city staff have received complaints over time, and those complaints are coming from residents that reside next to short-term lodging, and that's become a huge problem. The business has grown, and I'll show you some of the data that we have as far as the growth of this business. Currently, like I said, before July 14th, 2020, there were very little regulations that regulated short-term lodging. It was very simplistic, almost one-pager. It's all about getting a permit and not making a lot of noise, there's no rules about anything else. One thing to recognize with short-term lodging, it's not a property right. If you rent your home for less than 30 days, it is not a property right. It is, it is a privilege that the city grants through a permit program. If you rent or lease out your property for greater than 30 days, that's a property right, you can do that, you could do a long-term lease. Anything less than 30 days, it's not a property right, it's like a hotel, it's hoteling, that's all it is. And the city can dictate what happens less than 30 days. So that, that's an important distinction, and I know there's a lot of community members that feel and believe it is a property right. So with that being said, I want to continue here. So in early 2019, the city council formed a city council ad hoc committee, and the whole purpose of that committee was to view short-term lodging, is to talk to the community, talk to the operators, and talk to the residents. And what the committee wanted, and these are council members, these are elected officials, what they wanted to do, they wanted to balance the quality, quality of life needs of their residents versus the, the need to run a short-term lodging, versus the need of property owners. That was the whole purpose of the ad hoc committee, and they've done a lot of work on this, and I'll, and I'll share what that work is. One thing to know, short-term lodging is allowed in residential zones, except the R1 zones, our single-family zones, or mixed-use. You will find some single-family homes that do short-term lodging, well, that, their grandfather by an ordinance that was adopted in 2004, so there are some single-family homes. But no one can come now, today, to get a new short-term lodging permit in the single-family zone, the R1 zones, we just, we will not issue it. You can do it in multifamily, the R2s or greater. So I've been asked before, what are the complaint numbers? Again, we have to preface it that there are no, very little regulations on the books. So when we say complaint, complaint of what? There's nothing on the books, except maybe noise issues, or maybe a trash issue. So this is our code enforcement data that we have, and so we have the complaints on the top line, you know, it's dropped down from, since 2017, and we have the number of notice of violations and the number of citations. Below that table at the bottom, if you recall, the council did have a ban on short-term lodging for a period of time due to COVID. We've had a lot of people violate that ban, we've done a lot of complaints and issued a lot of citations for operators that don't want to adhere to an emergency ordinance that the council adopted. Again, the council is quasi-judicial, right? So what they pass is legal. Now, the ad hoc committee members were made up of council members Joy Brenner, council member Diane Dixon, and council member Jeff Herdman. They spent a lot of time talking to the community, and so what I have here on the screen, these are the public meetings, these are the meetings that we've actually advertised, where we've invited the community, and you can see there's a number of city council study sessions that the council has weighed in on. Each of the council members have had their own town hall meetings, listening to their constituents in their districts. So a lot of public meetings have taken place. One thing we don't have, and we don't track, is the hours upon hours this council subcommittee has worked on short-term lodging, the hours they've put in speaking to their constituent groups, the hours they put in talking to the community groups, talking to the operators, talking to the businesses, meetings upon meetings, conference calls and emails, I know, because I was involved with a lot of them, we spent hours on this, going back and forth and listening to people and trying to set up another conference call. There are, some of the community groups have done surveys, to survey their own districts and their own community groups, and I think there are some public comments that were submitted to the Commission on that, I think that was, CD MRA did a survey. So I just wanted to press upon this Commission that this council takes short-term lodging very, very seriously, they take the quality of life for their residents very seriously. So here's one of the challenges that Newport Beach has, as I explained before, that short-term lodging is allowed in the residential zone except R1, so that map is showing that orange is where can you put short-term lodging. Now, a property owner can today go get a short-term lot, can't get a short-term lodging permit today, because we have an emergency order that bans it. But if that emergency... that bans it. But if that emergency order is ever lifted, the potential for short-term lodging is over 10,000 units. We stopped counting at 10,000 because the number got out of control. That's the potential if every single property owner wanted to get a short-term lodging permit. It's 10,000. It's huge. And the ad hoc committee is very, very concerned about the growth of short-term lodging in this community. They feel that there's been significant growth over the last five years, and I'll share that information. Here, this slide here in front of you shows where the most impact are. And no, no surprise, we have the Peninsula District 1, we have our Babo Island, and we have Coron del Mar, right? Those are the most impacted. And the number of active permits that we have currently is 1,523 active permits. And you could see where they concentrate. That's, that's pretty significant in those concentrated areas. And so when we compare Newport Beach to other coastal cities, and we've done this, we did the survey about a year ago. So, you know, give and take are a few, a few percentage points here and there. But you can see, you know, San Clemente has some. Huntington Beach doesn't really allow short-term lodging, but they do have the Airbnb, I'm sorry, the bread and breakfast, not Airbnb, bread and breakfast. And then you could see Carlsbad at 690. And if you look at Newport Beach, we're more than double Carlsbad. And that's a concern for the council committee. You know, you cut Newport Beach short-term lodging in half, which we're not proposing to do, we're not taking away any short-term lodging permits, but it's a lot. It's a lot for our community. Now, I talked about growth. This table there looks at the number of properties that are registered. It doesn't look at units, it's the number of properties. And you could, you know that, you know, during the last recession in 2010, 2011, that was kind of our low point. And you could see the number of properties registered with short-term lodging is 661. Then you go to 2019, we're up to 1,055 registered properties. That's a 60% growth with no regulations on the books, with no really restrictions on the books. This is a concern for our council Active units. And again, it was difficult for us to track this data, just because permits are renewed. So we don't have great data to tell you every single year how many active units. But we do know, because we measured it in 2016, we had 1,000 active short-term lodging permits. 2020, 2020, we have 15, over 1,500. That's a 43% increase in the last five years. This is a concern for the committee. So the committee recommended code changes, recommended those code changes to the city council. The city council unanimously, not unanimously, they voted and adopted the phase one changes to short-term lodging. This is very, very significant for the city and for the city council. They adopted it July 2014. We call those the phase one ordinance. Those are the operational rules, the, the making sure permits are posted on the platforms. Platforms have a responsibility now. If there's an illegal unit posted on a platform, and we notify the platforms, they have to remove those listings. We have tighter enforcement. Instead of four violations in a 12-month period, now it's two violations in a, in a two-month, in a 12-month period. And now we have a minimum age to rent. Now it's 21 instead of before it was 18. Significant changes. These changes affect Title V. The Planning Commission has, does not have to worry about this. This has already been adopted by the city council. Ordinance 2020-15, that will be going to affect August 13th. I wanted to share all this with you to understand what the ad hoc committee's been focusing on, what they've been looking at, and why they're here tonight, and why they made changes. Now we're making, now the committee is making recommendations to what they call Phase Two. And Phase Two, are changes going to be implemented in Title 21. The Planning Commission has a say in what happens to Title 21. It's our local coastal implementation plan. Short-term lodging is a big subject for the Coastal Commission. After you make a recommendation tonight, it'll go to the city council, and they'll, if they ever were to adopt the Phase Two, it'll have, the item still goes to the Coastal Commission, and city staff will have to work with the Coastal Commission staff to figure out what's the best approach, and whether the commission can support these changes that you're seeing this evening. So the, as I talked about, the, these changes before you, and this is what your purview is, this is what you're focusing on, are these changes in pages 14, handwritten 14, and page 15, and handwritten 16. These are the amendments to Title 21. And as I said, they'll be reviewed by the city council. This, again, it's a recommendation from the commission to the city council, and then it'll go on to the Coastal Commission after that. So what are the changes? Well, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the changes, but I want to highlight what's the most significant. The council ad hoc committee, as you saw, there are, we have currently over 1,500 active short-term lodging permits. The committee does not want to issue any more. Whoever has a short-term lodging permit, they're golden. They keep their permit. That permit stays in place. Now, you can lose your permit if you don't use it. And we have in the, the ordinance that was adopted, if you don't pay your TOT in a two-year period, then you're not using your permit, and therefore you lose your permit. It lapses. As long as you're a good operator, and your permit never gets revoked because of code enforcement issues, you can continue to hold on to your permit. The permit stays with the property, so you could sell that property to the next buyer. That buyer can buy that property with a short-term lodging permit. They'd have to reapply and get a new permit. But they don't want the propagation of, of more short-term lodging out in the community. You have a permit now, that's fine. You get to keep the permit. We're not taking that away. You could assign it to the trust, you could assign it to your heirs, there's assignment rights. That, that continues. Again, the committee does not want to take away what the property owners already have, which is a short-term lodging permit. But they don't want it to grow. We're at 1,500. They don't want it to grow to 2,000. They don't want it to grow to 3,000. They don't want it to grow. We have plenty. The next change is imposing a minimum night stay. Now, the committee's making a recommendation. As I've said, there is, there are single-family homes that are operating with a short-term lodging permit. And we call those non-owner occupied, right? The owner's not present. You're renting out a home, a single unit. The committee's recommending a six-night minimum stay for those units. The other units, which are your duplex, you could actually have a property owner inside that unit, and no property owner in the, I'm sorry, and a tenant and a short-term renter in the second unit, those are three-night minimum stay. The reason why it's less is because the property owner's present, controlling the issues that are coming from the, the operation. The ad hoc committee does not, does not like the one-night renters, the, do not like the two-night renters. There have been problems. There've been the parties, right? Those large groups have been a problem for the council. This is why the council's imposing a three-night minimum for owner occupied, and a six-night minimum for non-owner occupied. The permit that gets issued, and any conditions that are imposed, gets posted inside the unit. And the owners, and this is part of the Title 21, you know, there are noise provisions, noise provisions inside Title 21 that are being implemented here, because that's something the coastal is going to look at and review also. So those two are the most significant changes. No new permits being issued, and imposing a minimum night stay for any renters. Again, the, the ad hoc committee is not trying to kill any business, is not trying to take away anything that people have. But they want imposed restrictions that are going to improve the quality of life for their residents. And that's what the ad hoc committee is recommending. They would like your support to move this item forward to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone, for that presentation. Thank you for your hard work on a lot of meetings. Thank you to council members Brenner, Herdman, and Dixon as well for putting everything together and their hard work to have multiple meetings. I think it's taxing on a citizen-run council, and we appreciate their service. Okay, so I will ask Commissioners for any questions of staff. Commissioner Kleiman?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. The first one being, how long has our permit process been in place? I mean, I know we have a history in the city of being a vacation rental community, but I'm just not sure what that looked like before we had any kind of a official permit process in place.
I'm going to have Monique answer it. Monique? Okay. She wants me to answer it. 1990, it was started in 1996, the permitting program.
So what did it look like before then? It was just completely unregulated?
That's correct.
And so outside of, of these various internet companies, Airbnb and HomeAway, VRBO, people just self-advertised? And were they typically more present? Like, the way we're talking about owner occupied and part of the unit and renting out part? Or, I'm just trying to understand kind of how this progressed and how it's changed over time.
Thank you, Commissioner Kleiman. I think what I've, what I've heard and understood from some of the operators, and there's different stories out there. So, you know, what I'm going to say is just one version of what I've heard. You know, there is less, less of a concentration. There's always been short-term rental activity in the city of Newport Beach. That it's, it's part of the culture for city of Newport Beach. I've heard that there were seven-day minimum stays, and that was a large business. The property owners were much more responsible and paying attention to, because there was no platforms. They didn't, they couldn't go to anybody besides maybe more of the agents, those individual agents. Now, now what's changed is because of the platforms, you don't need to use an agent anymore. You can just self-advertise and make sure the, the unit's cleaned and rented out. So it was, it was a different, it was a different time. It was a different culture back then. But now with the propagation of the, all these platforms, you know, as you've seen on the tables, it's completely expanded. We, we are struggling to keep up from a staffing side. You know, Monique is here, she is with, she issues those permits, and she gets a lot of questions on a regular basis. We are feeling that level of increased activity at the staff level, too.
And at what point, I know there, there was a sort of changeover to counting permits. And at some point, if it was one property, if it was a duplex, for example, it was previously one permit and now it's two, right? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? I was looking at the, the list of current permits, and it looks like a lot of them are counted twice for the same property. And again, I'm assuming that's because they're duplexes, which makes sense, since these are mostly R2.
That's correct. You're, you're correct. If there's a duplex, and they both have, they both need to be permitted. So if you have two on one property, we count that as two. We don't count that as one.
But has it been that way since 1996, when the, when the permit process started?
The permit started in 2004, 96, right? Right. And so that's what was implemented in 1996, correct?
It's been that way since 96? Because I know there's been some, it seems like the number sort of spiked, and I'm trying to figure out if that's because there was a change in the way, you know, it seemed like it, it increased quite exponentially. So if there was a change in the way they were counted, I could see how that might.
I'm going to have Monique Never, try to address the commission here. If you could turn it on. Monique, there's a switch there at the bottom.
Hi, good evening. So we've always permitted per unit, not by parcel. So since the permitting process happened in 96, just as Simone had said, if you had a duplex and you wanted to rent both of the units, there would be two permits.
It's always been that way?
Mm-hmm. So it's always been that way.
Okay.
We don't count it by parcels. Some of the numbers that he brought up, that he said that, you know, where it was by property to specify, as we were counting parcels in that, we're not counting, but we permit by units.
Okay. Well, don't sit down just yet. The other question I wanted to ask is, is if you have an understanding of what's changed. I'm looking at this, page four of this presentation that Simone just gave. And it looks like the complaints have dissipated over the years, as well as the citations. And I'm just curious what you attribute that to. It looks like in 2017, they were pretty high, and they've sort of tapered off.
So what we've done is, is we've contracted with a third party to help us identify illegal rentals. So a lot of the times, we would get the complaints from the neighbors that there was illegal rentals going on. The host compliance company does help us identify those illegal units. So staff is catching them prior to the number of complaints that are coming in from the public. That's some of the reasons. We have tried to dedicate a lot of the code enforcement to try and take care of, at least as a proactive approach for trash and parking. We have, you know, we're in touch with our parking control officers to make sure that those are being filed. So that could be the, the reasons why as well.
So there's possibly a good portion of these complaints that were for illegal units. I guess that would also sort of lead me to the next question, which is, how, even if we cap the number of permits, if we're still seeing a large number of people who are out of compliance, or just, you know, the way they are now, even, you know, during the COVID orders are continuing to operate, and people are obviously going to try to get away with whatever they can. So I'm guessing we're still going to see that, whether we cap the number of permits or not. And that's still going to be, need to be identified and enforced and dealt with.
We still, we will still get complaints, right? Currently, right now, under the emergency ordinance that's in place now, we do not issue new short-term lodging permits. But we do have complaints. We get complaints from residents. We get, we do have host compliance with, you know, scouring the platforms for illegal activity. So even though we're capped now, we don't issue new permits at all, and we still get complaints on the short-term lodging side.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have a question from Ms. Summer, about this kind of definition, and this slogan, that it's a, it's a privilege, not a right. I mean, I guess I was always taught in law school that this was sort of part of your bundle of rights. I'm curious to hear you weigh in on, on that definition, just because, again, prior to 1996 is a good example of people were doing this. This is part of your, your ownership right, in, in my mind. I don't know. I, I guess I should have looked up the black letter law definition, but.
Yeah, no, thank you. You know, I think that the city is looking at the interest of protecting the health, safety, welfare of the community by adopting these. And we certainly have that right under the police power. You know, existing permities would still be entitled to continue to operate their short-term lodging unit, and even use the residence as a, as a, as a permanent residence, instead of just a short-term lodging. So I think it's within the city's authority to go ahead and regulate under the zoning laws in order to protect the community.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is, we've made it a privilege and something that you have to apply for. But traditionally, it is part of your bundle of rights as a, as a property owner, no?
Well, I would say that we, we have still limited it in certain areas and continue to. So if, if one does not have an existing short-term lodging permit, then, you know, technically, they don't have that right at this point in time. And so typically, you look at what, what permits are in place at the time that the actual ordinance is adopted. And then, you know, forward-looking, then you would look at whether that right would be taken away. But at this point, if somebody does not have a permit and would not have one prior to the effective date of the ordinance, then technically, they would not have a right at this time.
Sure. No, that makes sense. And obviously, that's why we have zoning and land use laws. But I just wanted clarification on that. One last question for whoever wants to invite is, is the Coastal Commission topic. I know, Simone, you addressed it briefly. But one, I'm curious as to how Huntington Beach has managed to escape this. It seems like different cities are being held maybe to different standards, or maybe they were able to get something accomplished before, you know, the current climate. But, you know, we're always looking to, to our neighbors to see, well, what do they have and what do they have? And I know San Diego has attempted a number of times to restrict their vacation rentals in their coastal zone, and have been unsuccessful. But it sounds like Huntington Beach has had the opposite experience, and they have this bed and breakfast rule versus banning all, and then, you know, obviously Anaheim, and those areas are not in the coastal zone. But.
Commissioner Kleiman, I think you said it best. I, I think the, the climate has definitely changed with the Coastal Commission. I, I think if you've always had short-term lodging, I think the Coastal Commission is going to be very wary of to take it away from the community. But if you've never had it, and if you had tighter regulations on the books, I think they're more willing to accept what's been already on the books. And, and, you know, we haven't done a full research of, you know, what, how did Huntington Beach not issue short-term lodging, or not have a short-term lodging permit program? I do think Coastal Commission is really going to have an eye on Newport Beach when we submit this, if we submit this to the Coastal Commission. You know, they're, they're going to be very curious to see, what are we trying to change with the minimum night stay, with no new permits? You know, our, our biggest argument with no new permits is that we have more than anybody else. That's, that's our best argument. You know, we have quite a bit, and we're not trying to take it away from anybody. We're, we still have it. But I think you said it best. I mean, the climate has definitely changed now.
Thank you, and thank you for the commission's patience for all my questions.
Absolutely. Commissioner Klostermeier, you ready?
All right.
I have a question about the, the short-term lodging permits that have currently been issued. Do they need to be annually renewed?
Yes, that is correct. They do, they are renewed, and they can be renewed, even if this item moves forward.
And so if someone And so if someone forgets to renew it, and this item does move forward, they would essentially lose their short-term lodging permit, and they would not be able to reapply?
You know, I don't have a good answer, Commissioner Klostermeier. You know, if they forget to renew, I mean, we do send them a notices to renew. It's, you know, if they're utilizing it, they're not going to forget. If they're not utilizing it, like anything else.
Or if they choose not to renew, they couldn't, they couldn't come back in the future and ask for a new permit?
Absolutely right. Correct.
And so the way that this is drafted, after the effective date, the city would not issue any new permits, period, moving forward. And so I would assume that over the coming years, people would choose, people that currently have permits would maybe choose to not renew them. And so over time, eventually, if we could get to a point where there's no short-term permits at all in the city.
You're correct. In theory, the ad hoc committee recognizes that if there's no new permits through attrition, then this number's going to come down. And that's really their goal, is to have this number go down over, through natural attrition, not take it away from anybody.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Right. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Lowry?
All right. Kind of start off here with a couple of questions, kind of just more background. So, this Phase Two, if you will, that's part of, does that come from the ad hoc committee in terms of the kind of next steps?
That's correct.
Okay. So, my question is, so this recent ordinance we passed, or the city council passed was on July 18th, why come with these now? There's, it seemed like there was no time to kind of see, we just passed an ordinance, looks pretty descriptive. Why come back right now? Why don't give some time for this to kind of work its way out and see the results, and then come back at a later date? And it really is just a general question. Where was the tension, or not tension, but where was the, what were the reasons to come back so quickly on a Phase Two and not put it in the original?
Certainly. So, from the ad hoc committee's perspective, they didn't look at it as doing something quickly. They've been working on this for 18 months. So, these recommendations were all bundled together. Staff wanted to split these up to say, the Phase One, which doesn't need planning commission review, does not need coastal review. For us, I'll say the low-hanging fruit, we just need to go to city council, and that's easier for us to do and get done. You know, as, behind the scenes, there's a lot of staff work, a lot of legal work that goes into this. So, we're kind of strategic for how we schedule things. And so that's why we kind of broke it up into those two phases.
All right. This is just, really just information. I like to just look at, as I read the ordinance and saw, you know, the city council people who voted, I just see the As, and I see Councilman Duffield as an A, but also as absent. Did he, was he absent that day? Or, because he's on there twice as both an As and absent, just to kind of get the, if you look.
He was absent that day.
He was. Okay. Because he's also in the As, so they might want to look at this.
Okay, we'll look at it.
At least the one that we have in our folder, he's listed twice, both as the As and absent. So, I just wanted to get clarification, just to kind of see the sentiment on that. Let's see, what was the next question? So, you know, TOT tax-wise, we're kind of an idea of what, say, short-term rentals bring in, maybe to our underlying base, like, is there a percentage that, just to kind of, trying to get a, you know, big idea here of what type of tax dollars these bring into the community?
So, the TOT tax year for fiscal year 2019 came in at 4.48 million.
Okay, four. And is that, what's the, do you want the overall is, just like, what percentage of that is overall? I'm sure it's relatively, you know, small compared to, say, like, you know, the larger hotels. If you had 4.4, is that over, like, I don't, just, again, that's just a question.
So, I can't probably quickly do the math in the head, but the hotels bringing in about $25 million a year, and the hotels are, I mean, and the short-term rentals are bringing in about four and a half million.
It's about a fifth. It's, yeah, that's basically what I was trying to get, about a fifth of revenue, just to kind of see there. And really, only other question I had was in the Resolution Number Eight. The city manager shall have the authority to impose additional standard conditions applicable to all short-term lodging units as necessary to achieve the objects of this section. Just, none of those powers are enumerated here. Is there any type of thought process? That's a pretty broad, pretty broad paragraph, I think, just in terms of a kind of a, you can wave your wand, and it's not an individual, it's just to any individual, it's just giving, it seems to me granting quite broad authority to one person without, you know, having things enumerated here on how that should be conducted.
Certainly. So, as a reminder, the city manager is hired by the city council, so their individual is trusted by the city council to make the right decisions. So, this provision has been in the code before, so this is not something new. Some examples, which I've seen is, you know, I think it's just additional rules that were posted on the interior of the unit, or some handouts or brochures. I mean, those are kind of the smaller things. I sense, reading this for the first time, somebody may look at it and say that this is really broad, but we've had this in the code.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know. All right. Those were my questions.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. Any other commissioners want to?
Yes, Commissioner Elmar. Sorry, I skipped you.
Question on the permits. When somebody has a complaint filed against them, does that go against their permit? How does that work?
So, we get complaints all the time. We have to investigate the complaints. We have to, either one visually see the complaint, or if there's photos, there's a timestamp on the photo. There's always a due process, right? So, we always investigate it. It's not just a complaint and, you know, bad mark, bad demerit against the property owner.
And to what extent, from a complaint perspective, tell a person with a permit loses their permit or is restricted with their permit?
So, now, under the new ordinance that was adopted on July 14th, and which will be effective August 13th, if they get two violations, there's two citations issued against the property owner. So, these are documented citations. There, that permit gets up, gets put up for suspension for a six-month period. That property owner has due process rights. It can be appealed to a hearing officer, and it can be reviewed by a hearing officer. And hearing officers are not easy.
And before the July 14th was put into place, what was the permit recourse?
We'll turn to Monique. I think it was like four.
We didn't have a suspension phase in the prior ordinance. The suspension is new. So, in the last ordinance, we could start, it could be up to $500 or revocation of the permit. So, it was on the third violation, we could start revoking, or we can issue a $500 fine.
Got it. And so the suspension phase that just got rolled out in Phase One actually hasn't been, had the opportunity to be implicated yet. Is that correct?
That's correct. It hasn't been implemented yet.
Okay. And just one more, I'm sorry, you may have answered the question with Lee, but I just want to make sure I understood probably. Why, again, did they not bring Phase One and Phase Two together? Because they're a week apart, so.
So, for the ad hoc committee, they've been working on all this bundled together. From a staff perspective, it was easier for us to break this in phases. Phase One does not have to go to the planning commission, does not have to go to the coastal commission. So, it's a little bit easier to manage and work through. A lot of staff time, a lot of legal time goes into these items before they get presented to the city council. So, we broke it up strategically, get the Phase One done, that put to bed by the city council. Phase Two, which is before you, a lot more work. You have to go to the planning commission, try to get a recommendation, go to the city council, get them to buy off on it, and then ultimately get to the coastal commission and work through the coastal commission. A lot more work to it. And so it was better for us to separate it, get one part done, and put that to bed.
Got it. So, therefore, if you would have brought them both forward together, you went the risk of not getting some of the items?
Correct.
Well, this is Yolanda Sumreal, City Attorney's Office. I think also there, you know, are features to it that just relate to the short-term lodging permit, which have been in effect for a couple of decades now, and then the land use portion of it, which is a little bit different. And there is some overlap there, but I think the new features are kind of related to more of the land use features to the actual permit. And those do have to come before this body.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. And just for me, just so staff, we can kind of walk the commission through. Really, our task this evening is kind of three kind of parts. So, discussing a cap on new permits, limits on renewals, and the number of night stays, broken into two categories, one with an owner on site and one with an owner who is not on site.
That's correct.
Pretty much what our, you know, we talk about enforcement, that's kind of a policy that council will be, you know, discussing. I think for me, I think enforcement is probably one of the biggest components to this. And, you know, over time, the council will have to make those hard decisions on how they want to increase enforcement. I mean, they have a community resource officer for the schools, they have a homeless liaison, those are all through the police department. If the police department's going to be making these enforcement procedures, they probably should assign somebody in specific that can handle that. But that's a council discussion, and that's a monetary and budgetary issue that, you know, we have no purview. And so I think for commissioners, those three items that we really want to tackle on tonight are those. And I will now shift over one last housekeeping item, items of ex parte, and I'll start with Commissioner Rosin.
Done.
I've spoken to a number of members of the public on this issue.
Great.
As well as Residence Association president.
Perfect.
None.
I read 140 emails.
Lots of emails and public communication, yes.
Yeah, I did talk to owners of rental units and to residents throughout the community. So, yeah, 100, I think it was almost 150 or so. Yeah, we did get, so I do appreciate all of the feedback. And so what I'll do now is, I will take this to public comments. Again, I'm going to, just kind of by a show of hands and recognizing there are a lot of public speakers, just to have a show of hands in the room there, how many are interested in speaking on this item. Okay, great. And then how many on phone do we have? What is that? Eight. Sorry, I don't count fingers very well, but I got that finally. Okay, good. Okay. So, staff, do you think we should limit the public speaking to two minutes? Is that appropriate?
I do think with the number of public speakers there are here, two minutes is appropriate. But again, it's the chair's discretion.
Okay. And I'll look to my commissioners for a nod to say that that's okay. I don't want to miss something if we feel that we're, yes, Commissioner Kliman.
Can I just ask one quick question before we go to public?
Yeah, absolutely.
Since we did, speaking of all the emails we received, it seemed like there were a large number of those residents coming from Newport Island. I just wanted to understand how many, because I couldn't really tell from the addresses, I'm not that intricately familiar with the streets, but how many of the current permit holders are in that area?
So, for Newport Island, there's about 17 active permits on Newport Island right now.
Out of roughly how many?
Maybe about 100, 120 properties.
Okay. And then, do we have a sense of if there are also some unpermitted units as well, or not that we're aware of?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a great, great question, because we did receive a lot of feedback from Newport Island. Staff, when we look at these discussions, and sorry, we're going back to where we were before, but when we look at these discussions, is it allowable to ban these short-term lodging in specific areas of the city, you know, over time? I mean, not over time, but just, you know, they're already there. But, you know, is there, is there a way to revoke those if Newport Island became such an issue, or?
I think, so there's two different issues. Right now, because of COVID, the state is under emergency order, Newport Beach is under emergency order, the council has broad authority to do, take a lot of action. They have, they've imposed, they've banned short-term lodging for a period of time. They've now released it, and now they've imposed a minimum night stay now for, under this emergency ordinance, again, due to COVID. Once this is lifted, once there's no more COVID, there's no more emergency anything, any change the council would like to make about banning an island, or banning a portion, or just shutting it all down, it gets very challenging with the coastal commission. That's who we'll have to go to and get permission from.
Great. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Lowry?
Just one quick thing on the two versus three minutes. See, we have a lot of people here with COVID, maybe have let everyone have their three minutes, especially if they came. But if, at speaker's discretion, if other people are kind of getting to the same point, maybe they could just at least reference saying, "That speaker, I agree with him," and that would maybe speed along. But at least give everyone at least their three minutes, since there's a number of people and kind of challenging times to come in and actually, you know, want to be able to speak their mind on either side of this.
Okay. I kind of think that, you know, in the audience and those, just, you know, try to keep it so that there's, you know, on point. If there seems to be a repetitiveness of the exact same thing, I think we'll all pick that up. We've picked that up on the 150 emails we've got. So, but, yeah, I'll kind of use discretion on that. So, please just recognize that there's a lot of people on the phone and a lot of people in the community room. So, we want to be respectful of you coming out here and those that are on the phone being patient with us. So, yeah, let's tee that up and have the community room go first. Again, the phone number to call in is 949-270-8165.
So, Chair Wigan, are we looking at, because Clearville has to set the timer. What would you like it set up?
Do it two minutes, and then I won't interrupt you. If you go over, and, you know, I'll kind of keep an eye on the approaching third minute.
Great. Thank you. Chair Wigan and members of the planning commission. My name is Debbie Stevens. I'm president of the Cronodomar Residence Association. And after one of the town halls that Simone just was referring to, with discussions with him and Councilwoman Brenner and ourselves, we were asked to do a survey, and staff put together some of the questions. And I sent this to you late this afternoon, or this afternoon, anyway. And I apologize for the late notice, because we did have this data. We've sent it to city council, but it should have been to you sooner. So, we sent out the survey because we have a fairly hefty email. It went out to about 658 households. We had responses from 230, excuse me, from 311. And 75% of those were Cronodomar residents. So, this is heavy Cronodomar, although it did go to other parts of the city. We asked questions, you know, specific to what residents saw the problems with short-term lodging. And we asked the question, would you prefer that the city allow new short-term lodging permits? 76% of the respondents said no. 19% said yes. Do you think the city should require the operator to provide at least one parking space at a property? 90% said yes. 6% said no. Should there be a cap on short-term lodging permits? 82% of the residents said yes. Should the city allow the permit to be transferred to a new owner when the property is sold? 68% said no. 24% said yes. Should the capacity be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two additional people? 96% of the respondents said yes. It should be limited. 2% said no. Should the city require a minimum rental of three consecutive days? 75% said yes. 14% said no. And finally, should the city work to decrease the number of short-term lodging permits whenever possible? 72% said yes. 2% said no. So, there's a heavy consensus among the residents that there should be additional, or control of some of these short-term lodging rental units. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Just for staff, real quick, there's a little echo on that. Is that just what we're going to deal with? That's just normal? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Hello. Jeff Bossen with Share Newport Beach and Seabreeze Vacation Rentals. Just want to address what the commissioner was asking about regarding rights. This is from the Coastal Commission to the city of San Diego in 2018. This agency has generally interpreted local zoning ordinances in a broad fashion and found that short-term rentals or vacation rentals are a form of residential use permitted by right in any residential zoned area unless such uses are specifically prohibited otherwise in another ordinance. So, according to the Coastal Commission, yes, property right. So, I don't know where the city interprets that. But another thing I wanted to clear up, the reason Huntington Beach was able to not have short-term rentals is, as he said, they never had a short-term rental program on the LCP. They also allow huge hotels, so they have visitor-serving accommodations that Newport Beach doesn't. So, Newport Beach does have to go through the Coastal Commission. Thank you for putting up the number of complaints over the years. That was eye-opening. I suspected that was the case, but to put it into a little bit more perspective, those 1,500, if they were all operating, would equal about 60,000 visits, 60,000 bookings per year. And we're talking about under 200 complaints. That's, it's just not the issue that the neighbors make it out to be. So, what are we asking for? We're hoping that the three-night minimum that was passed, just passed 14 days ago, can stand for all vacation rentals. Give this a chance. This whole thing just passed 14 days ago. this a chance. This whole thing just passed 14 days ago, let's see how the enforcement works, because any ordinance, it's going to be out of control if there's no enforcement. But if there's regular enforcement, the rules that were just put into place are going to do absolutely great things for the city and make sure that these problems, perceived problems, go away. And any bad actors will be gone anyway. So, please don't limit the amount of permits and a six-night minimum. The Coastal Commission has no record of approving anything over a three-night minimum. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Charles Gayton, and I have a duplex on Newport Island. First of all, thank you very much for the charts with complaints, just as the gentleman ahead of me mentioned, but what that chart didn't really show is during those from 2017 to now, the number of units have gone up 43%. So the complaints went down and the number of units went up. So I think some of this just is a little overblown. Regarding Newport Island, there's 13 of us have units in Newport Island with 121 units. Why did Newport Island get singled out? A big squeaky wheel. I gotta applaud the people there who band together. But I can't believe, and I know, that parking, noise, it's not exclusive to Newport Island, and to penalize Newport Island is picking winners and losers, and I didn't really think that was the job of city governments to do, pick winners and losers. Because if you don't think an extra night at $100, $200 makes a difference, it does. It's hurt us a lot. And this whole idea of using the coronavirus to get stuff in before the Coastal Commission gets involved, that's just seems not quite kosher to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission, for letting us speak publicly tonight. My name is Chris Nielsen, owner and operator. We have eight units there on the peninsula. I think it's always good to look back on history, to learn where we've come from. I thought there were some insightful, insightful questions by the commission, and thank you for taking the time to ask those and have those addressed. I think if you look at Newport Beach, it's been the history of Newport Beach to be vacation-oriented. They spend a lot of time getting people down here to spend time on the beach and to have that. If you really look back on history, it's not been a bedroom community with full-time residents that has been invaded by vacationers. It's actually been a vacation spot, particularly on the peninsula, that has now had a lot of long-term R1 residences move in and around there. And I think if there's a major issue here, it should be addressed on the information that's being misfed to you as a commission. And I was really planning on keeping this really positive tonight. My family, for 31 years, was renters here before we bought these eight units. We fell in love with it, and we were a participant in an injection financially and into the vibrancy of this city as a family for 31 years, before the last six years, we made a major investment to be part of that and to be able to continue that for other families. That has been such a quality of life issue for our family, and it's been wonderful. We have eight families staying in our units right now. I was just down there. That is what people need, especially during this COVID time, is to be socially distanced with their families, be able to be out on the beach. I'm so grateful for the beaches being back open. I do see that this has been weaponized. I take great umbrage and offense by the director's comments of low-hanging fruit, and I've seen COVID weaponized against this group of owners in a ridiculous fashion. I don't think you want your hands on that, Planning Commission, in any way possible. So what do we want? We want to be treated fairly. We want you to look at the data. A lot of the things that we're looking at over the last four months, if anything, we've learned to follow the data for the right answer. So follow the data on this. I just, looking again, I just want to thank the director for the complaint chart that's gone there. Actually, and I'll just disagree with the math just a little bit, because as I look at that, that's 555,000 nights possible of the permits to what would have been in a non-COVID year, saying those 87 were attributable to COVID. Right now, we'd be at 50 complaints over 555,000. And to put financial ruin on an industry over that, I implore this commission to look deep into what is motivating this. I went to the first meeting, because I was on the side of wanting everyone to be licensed up and pay the TOT tax. I can't be at a 10% disadvantage to the illegals. You need to deal with the illegals here that aren't all the people who are holding permits and are here to do what's right. That's the problem here. Let's enforce that. I think it's appalling that the city doesn't know for four years how many permits they have issued. That's non-management at its best, just looking at that. I'm sorry to just call it how it is, but that's what it is. You need to know your program and manage it. And we do not need to be punished for this. We've endured this, and to have this weaponized at a COVID time is just ridiculous. I appreciate your effort. I've served on these jobs.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rosso, and I have properties where I have long-term tenants, year releases, and also short-terms. I'm also owner-occupied short-term, so I'm not affected as others for about a six-night minimum. However, I would like, somebody asked how the short-term rentals worked before. Well, years ago, starting in 1992, when I got my first short-term lodging permit, it was mostly seven nights during the summer, mid-June to mid-August, and then the rest of the year, it was hard to get a short-term all year during the winter season, so we had a nine-month leases mainly to UCI college students, which is worse than having short-term rentals year-round. If you want, I would like to see the records from the police department and how many tags, how many logos are given to those college students. I had tags for college students. No one police response for my short-term rentals or long-term rentals. So where are the stats for that? That is a nightmare, especially in the West Newport area. Regarding the comparison with other cities, San Clemente allows up to 20% of the housing in the short-term lodging units zone to be short-term rentals. That is in their website. Then a point, I didn't see, they are no issue more permits, I didn't see a cap, a number. So if we have a potential for over 10,000 units of short-term lodging permits of all the units, well, 20% of that will be 2,000. We are not in 2,000, I'm not asking for the number to be increased. However, if established a number, with time, some of the short-term lodging units will, by attrition, disappear. So if it's 1,500, okay, yes, establish a number, I prefer that. Regarding the number of, a minimum number of nights, there is the misconception that seven nights will bring better groups, better people than four nights or three nights, and that's not the case. I have business people that come because they are attending a conference, and they are three persons in a four-bedroom unit. They are non-noisy, they are quiet. So there is a misconception with that. Try, and enforcement is what is needed. If Newport Island has a huge problem with the specific addresses, where is the data of what action has been taken and why those problems haven't been solved? Don't penalize everybody else for that. What you have is illegal units. The complaints, when somebody asks why in 2017 we have more than in 2019, the answer was, well, we have many complaints that were due to illegal rentals. We still have illegal rentals. So today, how many complaints are due to illegal rentals? And what type of complaints are there? Because trash collection, I took pictures, and I will be sending regarding the trash collection, there are homeowners, bayfront, or long-term tenants that they have a disaster in the trash collection. Short-term units, yes, they bring trash, but that's why we were told that the Saturday collection in the peninsula was paid by the TOT. Well, the residents are not paying for the TOT. We, the short-term rental units, we are paying for the TOT to accommodate the additional effort of trash collection.
Thank you so much.
But there are many residents that have that problem.
Thank you.
Good evening. As a way of introduction, my name is Gary Cruz. I own a duplex on Newport Island, so I'm going to answer some of your Newport Island questions for you on why we're still in outrage. My aunt lives in the front unit, and I, my wife and I live in the back, and the family's had it since 1975, and I've been there since 1987. A little bit of history to address a couple of questions that were asked earlier. I'm unfortunately been around a long time, so I remember Bow Week, and I suggest those that haven't been around for a long time, take a look at Bow Week and what the conditions were in Newport Beach back in the 1970s. It got out of hand. Also, there are unpermitted houses on, properties on Newport Island, and there's also not every incident is reported. We don't want to turn on our neighbors, but that's what's starting to happen. That's one of the reasons that there's a little bit of outrage on the island right now. When I moved to Newport Beach, I was a letter carrier, and I delivered all down the peninsula, including the war zone. Not something anybody should be proud of, that Newport Beach has an area called the war zone. What Newport Island wants to not happen is to become a war zone. When I was delivering mail down in the peninsula, I noticed that there were properties that were managed by absentee owners and real estate companies, and there were properties managed by homeowners on-site. The difference was night and day. Again, that's what we're looking to prevent happening on Newport Island. The phrase professionally managed has lost a little glamour for me, because I realize, and I think most realize, that the person that walks in the door that rents that property may not be the person that's staying in that property, nor do they prohibit guests from coming in. I've experienced in the last 30 days professionally managed companies that have, yes, come in, urinating on the property, going to parties and shooting off fireworks. So, one of the reasons that we are looking at Newport Island is the increase, because I think, I don't have the exact numbers, but I'm going to say five years ago, there were three, and now there are 18. So we're looking to see that capped. It's just we don't want it to get out of hand. Also, I hope everybody understands that it's a lot different when you live it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Hello. Hello, my name is Deborah Hoffmeyer. I'm here tonight with my husband, and we are residents of Newport and natives of California. We are in the process of possibly buying a rental property in Newport, which is an interesting time to be purchasing a rental property. So I do have a couple of questions, and I apologize if I overlooked them in the paperwork that I quickly reviewed tonight. I noticed the figure one that you showed on your slides, but also is on page three of the packet for tonight, has the cities listed, have the cities listed out in comparisons of the short-term lodging for San Clemente, Huntington, a couple of different cities upon the list? I had a question, I was wondering if the active STL, the short-term lodging permits in Newport are listed by units, not parcels. Do we know that the other cities are listed by, as well by units and not by parcels? So when you look at San Clemente, it's 172 permits, is that a permit per parcel or is that a permit per unit?
I'll have you just continue on, and we're writing these questions down that we can ask later when we finish public comment.
Okay, great, thank you. Also, quickly, looking over the table, did you compare the actual square foot size of the cities? For example, I just quickly Googled Carlsbad, Carpinteria, and Newport Beach. The sizes of the cities are fairly, vary quite a bit. So Carlsbad is 39.8 square miles, Carpinteria is 9.27 square miles, while Newport is 52.92 square miles. So I think if we're going to look at a table, I think it would be important to have apples to apples in that table maybe listed out. It would be nice to know that information as well. And I'll quickly ask my two last questions. What is the overall goal by restricting and limiting the amounts of short-term lodging permits? And the reason why I ask is I noticed that it was presented that the current complaints and citations have lowered over the last few years without any phase of city intervening. So that's just kind of a general question. And my last question, very quickly, is how many hotel rooms are permitted in Newport City? I'm wondering this question, because I noted that it was mentioned, the amount of revenue that was generated by the rentals, and I'm just curious to see if there would be a comparison when you look at the amount of units per hotel, the hotel rooms that were permitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffmeyer.
Good evening, my name is PJ Paterno. I have a little bit of a unique perspective in that I live in Colorado. I've been coming to Newport Beach because it's vibrant, fun, exciting, entertaining, sunny, yummy, close, for 30 years inside of college. I, we got, I started renting here, and I lived here and worked. Anyway, I currently, or I bought a place five years ago that we fell in love with, and we have it, and we rented out through professional organizations, and now, I don't know if I'm a successful renter or not, but we have a family that fell in love with it, so they're on their, at the end of their second year of renting it. So my first question is, when we got this permit, then they added that 10%, and I asked the question why it was, and they said it was because there's more stress on resources and things like that with short-term people. And one of the things they told us is that we're going to start doing trash collection twice a week. Well, that never materialized. Of course, we pay our 10% when we had short-term renters. So I don't know what the story is with that. But also, do I have an active permit or do I not? I have someone there, I've been paying it every year, I renew it, but I've had a two-year renter. So is that an active permit, or am I about to lose it and I have to fabricate some little quickie, short-term person or renter and just to throw some tax your way? Can you answer that question, for starters?
We'll take these down, and then at the end of public comment, we'll come back to staff.
Okay. Second comment is, I'm very fortunate, the reason I'm able to attend your meeting today is because I just closed on a new property yesterday, yesterday morning. So, these people that, it's a beautiful property, we're looking forward to building a dream home on it. I paid $2,700 a square foot for this place. And, you know, the neighbors around there certainly benefit when people like me can come in there and buy stuff like that and pay these fees, because of course, all the property around there, the values are going up. So, one of the things is, I've had engineers there, I've had architects and everyone else, and they tell me this delayed process might be up to two years. And so carrying costs on a property like that are heavy. And so part of what I expected to do is do a short-term rental, like I've done in the past. We've had tremendous success. The family from Florida that rents our place, they're great. We actually sort of share the property, they've been wonderful. We use the same housekeeper, everybody's been good. So, I guess my question is, I need, and people like myself need, short-term rentals to get through carrying costs until we perhaps have a different place. The very last comment I'd like to make, which I think is somewhat unique, is if you've ever seen your favorite Tesla ad on TV, point is, Tesla doesn't do ads. Tesla, people buy Teslas because their friends tell them they're great cars and they do it. You put up a picture with about 50 different names of companies, just because they have a logo doesn't mean they're a company, you know? It's harder to do a taco stand than it is to be one of these online companies. So there's professional management, there's Seabreeze, there's Bur White, there's any of these Airbnbs or different things like that. And it's because neighbors are talking to people, having success with professional management, that this thing is proliferating. It's not because all of a sudden everybody thought of it themselves. It's a lot easier, it's a lot, it's not as intimidating, because professional people help you rent your places, make a few bucks to help with carrying costs, or help you afford a place in one of the best places besides Vail, perhaps, in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Hello, my name is Kerry Bell. I live in Newport Shores, and so we're very familiar with the war zone, and we're also in a very unique enclave that has the R1 and then fronts to the R2. So, we're, and we also had the joy of being with the Newport Channel Inn and the, now the Soul Arena and what was the Pine Knot. So, we're pretty well-versed in a bit of what can go right and what can go wrong. I respect that everybody wants to protect their quality of life. We have another home in Wrightwood that we operate as a short-term rental, and we're very hands-on with making sure that it's a very small, tiny community up there. You don't want to step on toes. I feel that one of the things that we really need to consider in looking at this is, how many of us in this room or on that panel have been to Catalina? many of us in this room or on that panel have been to Catalina Island? Catalina Island is almost completely short-term. None of us have properties there. And they don't go about having punitive measures on Catalina Island. They regulate what's going on. And I feel like the quality of the people in the room here are the people who are concerned with proliferating this short-term situation that we have. And I think it's quality over quantity. So I don't think that limiting the numbers is the issue. I think it's providing the quality and making sure that things are regulated in a proper way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Wagen, members of the commission, this is Jim Mosher. First, I wanted to observe that the city's permitting program actually started in 1992, not 1996. It's ordinance number 92-13. Second, I wanted to remind you that the item before you tonight is an amendment to the implementation plan of our local coastal program. What the implementation plan is implementing is a document called a coastal land use plan. And I would like to make a couple of observations about that. If you've actually looked at the coastal land use plan, which is, I've never seen a printed copy, it is online. If you look at page 2-37, it describes Newport Beach as having a significant number of single-family homes that serve as overnight visitor accommodations, and how wonderful that is for large families and the affordable alternative it offers, even though we don't actually do that anymore. And if you look at page 2-50, it describes short-term lodging as a rental for 30 days or less, which is traditionally what it has been. That's what the state law is. I do not understand why our city staff wants to change that to less than 30 days. And then finally, the director directed you to pages 14 through 16, handwritten 14 through 16, of the agenda packet, which are the actual changes to the implementation plan. I noticed many of the written comments were decrying the idea that you could no longer, if a property was sold, sell the permit with it. I can't find anything here that implements that restriction. What I do see, however, on handwritten page 14, at the bottom of that, is a paragraph three that says, "No annual short-term lodging permit shall be assigned or renewed unless", and then it gives seven, seven conditions which prohibit the renewal. None of those have to do with transferring property though. But number B, if you read it, says that the short-term lodging unit must be located in R1 parcel. And C says that it has to be located on a non-residential parcel. I cannot imagine any property that could be both residential and non-residential. Therefore, if this was adopted, no permit could be renewed at all. Those conditions probably could be tweaked a little to do what you want, but they don't work as written. And then in item C, under operational standards, it begins with an existing phrase. It says, "The owner or legal, person who holds the legal title shall do the following", and then you flip it over to the following page. One of the things that they can do is not rent for these time limits. I would read that to mean somebody who is not the owner could do that renting. So that could be a problem too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Craig Battley. First, I want to make clear that I agree with the city's goal of formalizing the good neighbor policy for short-term guests to adhere to. As a, as a short-term lodging permit holder myself, a past 14-year resident living on the peninsula next to short-term lodging units for 14 years, and as a short-term operator of other properties, I have two points of contention with phase two. First, the ordinance states the staff is of the opinion that instituting a minimum of a six-night stay will not prevent public access to coastal resources. This conclusion is not fact-based. The arbitrary six-night minimum provision reduces overall bookings by 42%, creating a two-tier system with a three-night stay in an owner-occupied unit, which constitutes only probably less than 5% of all permits, and a six-night non-owner-occupied units, which constitutes 95% of all total permits, reduces overall bookings by nearly 50%. Why? Because 95% of all short-term lodging permits are held by non-owner-occupied units, thus reducing total coastal access bookings for three, four, and five-night stays, which together constitute 42% of all short-term lodging bookings. The 42% booking reduction is fact-based, analyzing over two years, the actual three, four, and five-night bookings as a percentage of a two-year total of 4,500 confirmed bookings. All owners and operators can, and so, that's based on facts. Three, four, and five nights are very popular. All owners and operators can live with a three-night minimum, not a six-night minimum. Second, the provision of freezing short-term lodging permits at its current level again reduces affordable access to the coast. During the, I tended all the puff meetings myself, I never once heard anybody talk about capping or freezing the permits. I heard capping at 1,600, I heard capping permits at 1,650, but there never was it talked about a freeze. Phase two is not ready for prime time. You can tell that by the dozens and dozens of emails that have come out. One, you know, Newport does a great job of managing these things. We have the DAX, we have the Lugo, and most short-term lodging are on the peninsula for 65% of properties are rentals. Why not focus more on compliance? Creating short-term owner handbook would be a big step towards code compliance. Why introduce phase two when the ink isn't even dry on phase one? Let's see how well phase one accomplishes its purpose, awaiting out bad operators. Summer's over, everybody's dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. Most of the 1,500 short-term lodging permit holders haven't even digested phase one and are totally unaware there's a phase two. I urge the planning commission to refer this ordinance back to staff for modification, incorporating short-term owner fact-finding, using data instead of relying primarily on staff opinion and a few vocal nimby's.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Curtis Westlin. My wife and I and our neighbors own a duplex on Baboa Peninsula. We've been coming down and staying here for 24 years now, either as renters or as owners. We, we look and qualify our tenants. We are very concerned with the loud noise ordinance, and we think that's a good way. I think we are focusing too many on, too much on those that don't follow the rules compared to those of us who do follow the rules. I really think the three-day minimum, as Craig just said, and as the one commissioner said, you don't even let a week go by before you institute a new set of rules for us to absorb what we, three months. I mean, we lost out on $50,000 in bookings when the COVID and the, the stats came that we could not rent from May or March through May. We've got to make that up. The city's probably in effect or not getting that much tax revenue either. To penalize those of us for a six-night minimum, it's not going to happen. The new people, my daughters all, or in their twenties and thirties, they don't, people don't stay for a week, two weeks anymore. They just don't. And to penalize us to say it's three nights, I think we're living with that. As Craig said, maybe two-night minimums. We'll work that part out, but go after the people that aren't following the rules. As far as the total number of permits, just to say, and that's also been said, it's been 1,650. The number tonight, or you're now saying it is what it is. That was never stated at any of the meetings that I've been to. So I think you need to relook at that and put this on the shelf and let it sit for a year or two, and then come back to this. Let's live with what's been proposed and in effect, and doesn't guess go into effect until August 13th. And let's live with that for a little bit and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westlin.
My name is Max Johnson, and I'm a 25-plus-year resident here in Newport Beach. Currently reside in District One in the Baboa Peninsula Point community. Grew up splitting my time between Newport Heights and the peninsula. And from, you know, the experience just in the last decade, seeing the difference of our quality of life in Newport change due to SDRs, it's been quite dramatic. And, you know, earlier it was stated that we shouldn't have a war zone or the term war zone be labeled upon any community, let alone the peninsula. You know, I, I hope Newport Island doesn't turn that way or go towards that way. I think there are a lot of great points on both sides of the aisle tonight, but I think something that's really important, specifically, the commissioners that don't have 10, 15, 20-plus years living here in the city, it is really important to go back to the history of our city. We have a rich history, and the peninsula specifically is full of it. And I know my neighbors and friends that have lived here for 60, 70, even 80 years. I have some neighbors that are 100-plus years old. You know, it's a constant conversation that the quality of life has decreased due to the amount of short-term rentals. We all enjoy seeing, I think, the behavior, you know, the good behavior coming from families and people that are renting short-term rentals in the city. But from Baboa Village to the Wedge, or even from Baboa Village to, you know, 29th Street is crazy. On my daily runs or drives in the village, Baboa Village, you see the amount of activity and college students and parties and what comes from that. Our police department, if you speak to the officers in District One, many sergeants don't even choose to go down in District One because they know how much activity is there. So I, I think, I really urge the council, I think what Simone and staff have presented is really great. I don't, I think we really need to restrict, you know, the short-term rentals, and I think creating more guidelines in place, I'll finish up here in a sec, is going to be beneficial. The fact that we're the Mecca of short-term rentals in California and Southern California is ludicrous. And I don't want to see my family in 40 years saying that we could have done something. I mean, supportive businesses that are making money, but we ought to have guidelines and restrictions and to keep the issues coming from these properties that are causing an issue. All you have to do is live, live down Peninsula Point or live down near the Wedge, go to the boardwalk. And if you compared it for the last 20 years, there's a huge increase in difference in quality of life. And I can't tell you, if you pull up the police logs, how many calls on a weekly basis happen. I'll share a small story. There was a gentleman renting short-term rental right after Baboa Village, was high on drugs about, may I say, maybe four weeks ago, became naked and was throwing furniture at the units next to him. And it took seven or eight police cars to tackle him, and he was high on drugs. And that's not a singular instance. That has happened a lot, right in the stretch after Baboa Village, where it's known, a lot of college graduates and high school students or college students for the three, four days rent it out, and it's party Mecca. And any of the commissioners, I really urge you, those residents that ride off the village, they don't always have the time to come to these meetings. But most of them have lived there for 17-plus years, and they have quite the amount of stories to share. So I urge the commission to approve the restrictions and approve phase two. And I thank you for asking all the questions that you have. And thank you, Simone and staff, for doing a really great job with this. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I have a duplex on Seashore, and I'm really glad that guy's not my neighbor. It's not that bad out there. You know, there's, a lot of people made really good points out here. We're focusing on the bad. We've got a lot of good stuff out here. My son and I run ours, and we're really hands-on. We are right here. If anything happens, I care more about my neighbors than my renters. That's how I feel. I think that if we could take phase one, let's run it up the flagpole, let's see how it works. We're moving way too fast on this. This is our business, and for a six-night minimum, how, we can't even run our business with a six-night minimum. If someone books August 1st to the August 6th, and then someone else comes in and books the 10th to the 16th, I got four nights I'm stuck with. I can't even do anything with it. This, six nights should not be allowed. It's unacceptable. I agree we have to have restrictions. I'm all for restrictions, but we're going too far on this. We really need to test the waters on this one here. Thank you.
Sir, I missed your name. Sir, I missed your name when you'd come up. Could you just speak for the record, your name? Sir? Thank you.
Brian Boltinghouse on Seashore.
Boltinghouse, thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the community room? Okay, I'll move over to the phones. How many do we have on the phones? Still eight? 15, all right. Please remember to mute your television because we're a 40-second delay, and you'll get echoes just like this. We can start with the first person. Remember, we did two minutes. I'll let you go over a little bit since we usually do three, but I prefer to do two if we can. All right, you're on.
Good evening, committee members and witnessing guests. My name is Charles Darkea, and I own a property on 43rd and Seashore. We started buying in Newport Beach in 2000, and through baby steps, we are now owners on a ocean breeze. It took us a long, long time to get that. We look forward to purchasing another property as another baby step on the sand. But the problem is, is that if you guys move forward with the short-term rental issues, I will not be able to afford being able to rent my prop or pay my mortgage and set up our, our retirement. The minimum of seven days is going to really hurt. A lot of families cannot afford three days. I'm sorry, seven days. Some do, come in for three days at times. So I have some solutions that might help this document that the committee's trying to come through. You know, as a property owner, we cherish our neighbors as well because of course, they are also residents of the area. So in order to be able to comply by city ordinances, why not increase the fines to the owners if we do not comply or there's complaints? Another idea I thought of my wife, why not mandate that each owner who carries a permit have a property management company overlook the property and the rentals and report the income? That way, it's supervised by a professional company in the area. The situation with the existing permits and carrying it over and grandfathering them in, well, why not, if a buyer comes in and purchases a property that has an existing permit, why not just have them grandfather that into their property? And as purchasers ourselves on a property that is currently with an existing permit, why not carry that over as a grandfathered property permit to lease the property as a short-term rental as well? Last thing, businesses. Throughout the peninsula, many, many businesses around there, and I personally know the owner of the arcade at Baboa, they depend on short-term rentals. A lot of the locals don't go to the arcade. They go out outside of the city at times for dinners and entertainment. So the short-term rentals are the ones that, pretty much, the guests actually, are the ones that stimulate the economy in the area. So that's what I need to say. I hope the committee takes this into consideration, and I hope that you guys work this out. But one thing for sure, I wish that we could be present and these committees would not have these kind of meetings during this pandemic. I would love to be there personally rather than on the phone and being on hold for an hour and a half. But as an owner, I volunteer to do this. But I wish that you guys would postpone all these things until this pandemic's over and we could personally, and I would fly in, I live in the Bay Area, and participate in these meetings personally, and I'm sure a lot of their owners as well. Thank you very much. God bless. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. All right, you're on.
Hi. My name is Nancy Alton.
Could you please mute your TV, please?
I'm trying. I'm so sorry.
Do you want us to come back to you? Can we do that? I guess we can. Just call, could you please call back when you fix that? Okay, great. Next caller, please. All right, you're on.
Hi there. My name's Joe Bowerbank. I'm a resident of Newport Island for about 10 years now. I'm here with my wife Mona and my son Mason, who are six years of age. I do hear a weird echo in the background, but my TV is off. Aside from the parking issues, the noise issues, et cetera, I want to make two main points, and that's, as it relates to the STRs the owners of and their contention that, one, it's always been this way. It most certainly is not. I've lived here for 10 years on Newport Island. It has not been this way, period. The noise level, the dynamic has changed. I could go on and on and on, but I'm not going to. Number two, in terms of Newport Island being just like everything else on the Peninsula, it's not, guys. I can hear my neighbor's alarm clock from across the street. Beep, 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 beep. It's quiet. You can hear a, you can hear an echo from anywhere around here. So when you have a higher concentration of STRs on the island, it makes an impact, and that's the bottom line. So it's changed the dynamic as a result. Now, on the flip side of it is, and in fairness to those who have been handed out STR permits, they count on that for revenue. So I blame the city. If you don't want this kind of problem, then don't hand out so many darn STR permits. It's that simple. So what's the solution? Guys, I don't know. I'll leave it to you. But that's, that's my position, and that's what I wanted to share with you. I know you've heard a lot of recurring gripes. And I just want you to know, one, no, it's not always been this way. And two, no, it's not, Newport Island is not the same as the rest of the Peninsula. And that's it. Again, Joe Bowerbank, Newport Island, lived here about 10 years. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you for calling, and thank you for your patience. Okay, you're on the line.
Yes, hi. My name is Newby Sears, and I wanted to speak regarding the short-term rentals, particularly on Balboa Island. And I live in a block that I, that's maybe five houses. And there's maybe three of the houses that are rented short-term, you know, on a weekly basis or so forth. Some of the homes are shared by, you know, family members. And in addition to that, they're rented out on short-term rentals. And I have to tell you that every tenant I've met has been an absolute delight. It adds a tremendous amount of life to my neighborhood. If these homes weren't rented on a temporary basis, there'd be no life on my street because the homes sit vacant 70% of the time. When I walk around the island, there's a certain section that doesn't allow short-term rentals, and I never see anybody there. The houses sit vacant. They're dead zones. So the life of Balboa Island, the family just celebrated 100-year anniversary. They've been coming, people to Balboa Island, renting summer cottages, back units, front units, for 100 years. People have built memories of the experience of having a short-term rental on Balboa Island. And I just boggles the mind that you are trying to limit this opportunity and steal the childhood memories of the children that can sit with their fathers and barbecue on these patios and bring home memories and be ambassadors for the city of Newport Beach and Balboa Island for their whole lives because of the memories they've had from Balboa Island. So I see this as a tremendous opportunity to increase the amount of short-term rentals on Balboa Island, to increase the vibrancy of the island. I don't think Balboa Island is being used more today than it was 30 years ago or even 50 years ago. I think there was more people back then. I see on every street duplexes being torn down and turned into single-family homes, which certainly people have every right to. And most of the houses sit vacant and never used. And that does not create a vibrant community. So I would encourage you to increase, not limit, the amount of short-term rentals for Balboa Island. Now, I understand that the Council recently voted to limit short-term rentals and not issue any new permits because of COVID. Now, that also is counterproductive because people are still going to come to Newport Beach and if they don't have the opportunity to build the childhood memories and family memories of a vacation rental on Balboa Island, they're going to be stuck in a hotel. And they're going to rent two rooms, and they're going to, if they're going to spread COVID, that's 100 times more likely than them being able to rent a the short-term rental where they can cook at home, isolate with their families, enjoy beautiful barbecue, and have the experience, the wonderful experience of Balboa Island. So I would encourage you to repeal this short-term rental permit, whatever you call it, moratorium, and increase the short-term rentals if you want to prevent COVID from coming to Newport Beach.
Thank you. Okay, you're on.
Thank you. My name is Mark Marcos. I live and own on Newport Island for the last 15 years with my family, and I reside on the Community Association Board. I just want to say that Phase One and Phase Two of this ordinance are imperative for an industry that's been left unchecked for decades. The whole violation argument where we have no violations, you can throw it out the door because there's been no code enforcement, and the police will not issue fines, and they won't even deal with it. They'll just give warnings. So it's, you just throw that argument out the door. Our residents have made significant investments and sacrifices to live where they live, and they want to be protected from the transient hotel business that's been allowed to move in. We moved there to raise, excuse me?
Continue, please.
Wait, okay. Anyway, so our island is 120 lots, and we now have 13% to 14% density of short-term rentals. It's been completely overrun. And it can't be controlled due to the size and triangular shape of our island. And any given day, we're overrun with additional cars, congestion, noise, nuisance, trash, and absolutely no parking. As it is, we only have 55 guest parking spots on the street, and we can't handle our own residents, let alone STR guests. And in addition, we don't know who's coming and going on our island on a day-to-day or week-to-week basis, nor do the owners or management companies of the short-term rentals, and they really don't care because they're not next door to them. So when yet there's another, yet another problem, it is the residents who end up cleaning up the problem, dealing with the issues, and are the ones that are inconvenienced. We're continually negatively impacted by the daily influx of the visitors who display little consideration and regard for the rest of us. This should not exist in a neighborhood predominantly made up of owner-occupied units and families. Please don't continue to allow business and profit to be put before the health and well-being and peace enjoyment of our residents and families and property owners, of which they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling. Okay, you're on, but can you please mute your television? Hello, you're on. Can you please mute your television?
Yes, hello. My name is Kirk, and I am a owner of a duplex on the Balboa Peninsula. This is an owner-managed, we manage the property. One of the units has over 75 five-star reviews. The other unit has over 35 five-star reviews. We've never had a complaint. We, as I said, manage this property. This is a year-round business. This is not a seasonal business. It's a year-round business that generates over $4.5 million in taxes, not even mentioning or trying to put a number on the sales tax that gets created when all these families come in here. They go to the, they support our local businesses. The auxiliary businesses that benefit from the short-term rentals will suffer with this Phase Two ordinances. The, I understand and support the need for rules, regulations. I understand concern over the number of permits. However, when you look at the numbers, when you go back and you look at those, the numbers of permits go up, and your complaints and citations have gone down, and they've gone down dramatically. The six-night minimum is a game changer for this industry. There's a, the other gentleman gave you facts and figures. I will just tell you it is a game changer. It no longer makes this business profitable. I want to thank the City Council, the Ad-Hoc Committee, for the time you guys have put into this. However, this feels very much like an overreach here. And you just barely put in Phase One, and along comes Phase Two. And again, there's items in these ordinances that is an absolute game changer for the industry. Thank you very much for your time and your service.
Thank you for calling. Okay, you're on.
Hello?
Hi. Please mute your TV.
Okay, okay. God, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Gailla Wilner, and I own a duplex on the Peninsula. I first would like to say I also live in Newport Beach, and at neither of my, of those properties have I received the survey that the first speaker discussed. So I'm not sure how complete her statistics are. My duplex is next door to a property that is rented to full-time to a bunch of 20- and 30-year-old young professionals. On July 4th, in the middle of COVID, there was a loud party with amplified music outside, a caterer, tons of trash. So to say that the short-term rentals are the cause of the change of the community is not true. And if you limit the, you know, the permits or cause, you know, require that we can only rent for six days or more, you're going to see a lot more long-term leases to college students, and you're going to have a lot more of those types of code violations. In contrast, I've rented recently and, you know, throughout the time I've had my permit to families that are coming here from Utah and Colorado and Arizona. And they are very respectful of my property and of my neighbors. So I think you need to look at the number of complaints, that statistic that you were looking at, and look at the number of complaints that were against unpermitted rentals versus, you know, the illegal ones versus the permit holders. I'd also like to address the, the fact, I'd like to echo what other people have said, that we just, you just enacted Phase One. Give it a chance to work. Part of Phase One was that we need to post the name of, you know, someone who is on call 24/7 and is responsible for the property. Give us a chance to show that, that doing that, for those of us that use professional property managers, is having a positive effect. During COVID, the restriction of a three-night to three nights has a minimum stay has significantly impacted my business. And so I would caution you against any further limitations on the number of nights. I think three nights is too many. Maybe two is the right number. I get people that come from Yorba Linda and other areas, families that want to come for the weekend. And we are taking that opportunity away from them. And I, and by giving different number of restrictions to owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied duplexes, you're going to have more enforcement problems as well. So I would really ask the Commission to take another look, maybe go back and revisit the proposal that's on the table and come back to us, hopefully after COVID, when we can be there in person to discuss this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, you're on.
Hello, Planning Commission members, Chairman Wigan. My name is Don Abrams. I hope you'll indulge me tonight. Maybe give me a little more time. I've lived on Balboa Island since 1992. I've had a real estate brokerage on the island since 1998. In germaine's, at the night's discussion, I manage about 30 short-term rentals on Balboa Island, which is probably down from a high of 40 because homes have sold and been torn down, and there are actually less units today. My firm rents to families who come year after year to enjoy our heavenly slice of Americana all year long. These vacationers cause zero problems and add to the economy of our restaurants and shops and the service industry that supports them. These approximately 1,500 short-term rentals in the city also bring TOT revenue to the city of about $4.5 million. Simone started out tonight saying that vacation rentals were a huge problem. Complaints were a huge problem. And then he showed you that there were 136 last year, and that was actually down from prior year. 136,000 complaints, over tens of thousands of visits. Imagine how many complaints they have about people in the 5,000 hotel rooms in the city, which we never hear about. 136 complaints, and that's what this is all about. I'm a former prosecutor and an attorney still, and I can tell you 136 is not a big number. And like Commissioner Climen, when I went to law school, we learned that vacation rentals were a property right. In fact, in contract law, my professor, Max Pock, was the very first case he had is that vacation rentals were invalid. If someone had a contract for a vacation rental, it couldn't be broken. That's how important they were. Now, the City Council has been holding hearings on short-term rentals for the last few years. Now, a few members of the Council have an anti-short-term rental agenda due to a handful of complaints in their districts, mainly from Newport Island. These members of the Council are trying to guide legislation in such a way as to eliminate short-term rentals altogether. I urge you not to go along with this agenda. Last week, the Council passed a punitive ordinance designed to handicap short-term rentals. Then, because they knew they didn't have the legal right or political capital to do this, they shifted another more punitive plan to you with the six-day minimum which are 95% of the time would not apply. And they're hoping that they can later say that they just implemented what the Planning Commission recommended. Please do not let them use you in this way. Putting a cap on short-term rentals is unreasonable. Short-term rentals have only grown slowly over the last five years, and it's because they started counting two-unit property as two units instead before they had counted them as one. Short-term rentals have been around for over 100 years and are part of the fiber of the city. Please don't allow them to use this. I know of homes that have fallen out of escrow because the Council has already put a temporary ban on short-term rentals. Likewise, the six-night minimum was never even discussed at any of the Council meetings or hearings, and the Council is trying again to get you to do their dirty work. 95% of short-term rentals are not owner-occupied, and the Council knows this. This shows the Council's hidden agenda. Finally, I seriously doubt whether any of these provisions will pass muster with the Coastal Commission, which is why the Council wanted you to stamp them instead of doing it themselves. I urge the Commission not to pass these wrong and likely illegal provisions. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Okay, you're on.
Hello, my name is Brad Bowman. I own a two-unit place at 128 35th Street in Newport Beach. First of all, Council members, thank you very much for your diligence, staying late. It's now an hour and 40 minutes since I've been on hold. And Chairman, I really appreciate your reaching out. I did respond to you, but I can understand why you could not retreat, respond to 150 emails. That being said, here's our deal. We bought our place in 1990. We rent out the lower- We rent out the lower units to year-round. Now we'll, we'll have a family there for seven years because they want to send their two gals to Newport Elementary. It's upper unit, we rent to UCI students, mostly athletes. My son is a Lawton Laurel recipient, captain of the soccer team there. That's where we started and we support athletes at UC Irvine. And in the summer, we rent it to vacationers, families, one week or two weeks. But occasionally, a family can't affect, can't afford six days. So our deal is four-day minimum. So your six days is a little bit too, you know, invasive. The second thing is, we have very, very, very strict house rules. During the week, which is because we have our, our neighbors, Sylvia and Bob, who we started with, her daughter was seven years old and now she's graduated from the University of Washington. During school days, hey, bring the party inside at 9:30. Okay, on the weekends, please bring it inside by 11:00 so we don't affect the neighbors. We are a good neighbor policy people. But we don't need the oversight to tell us what's the right thing to do. So what I'm asking you is, please, don't litigate good judgment. We have good judgment. And the two things I'm really against is, one, the six-day minimum, and the second is that you won't allow new permits. Please, if there is one of the 1,054 whatever units, units that come up, I'd like to reinvest in the Newport community. I love the Newport community. I love the people. I love the atmosphere and I love the commodity. I love the beach. I love the alley restaurant. I love the bao shop at Balboa and PCH. I love Mike Lynch's. I like, I love Jack's.
Thank you.
For over 20 years.
Thank you for your call. Okay, you're on.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Waterman. My husband and I have owned a duplex for 22 years. We recount on this for, we have our income. Our kids have grown up in Newport. They are now off to college. This pays for, as you can know, lots of things. And it just seems that we're now in a different position that we're facing. I'll try to be quick. I don't want to repeat stuff. The two violations mentioned, for instance, if we have it on trash or something, I think there should be accountability for some people who are violating that, but maybe we can look into other ways to solve that with third-party contractors such as you did to locate illegal renters. We can pay more to have people help with that. I don't think it's fair to have two violations in our permit go away. Families work hard. They spend the weekends to relax. We rent to only families. And to, to not have the three-day, families can no longer have their weekend vacation to barbecue. This just seems to be something that needs a lot of more time with more involvement from the community to help solutions come up. I do agree that we should have some, some things, but let's look at the, the group of renters that were on that first screenshot. 54 companies I never heard of. They're not even local reputable onsite hands-on realtors that deal with the properties. Maybe we could do a modification that works for those instead of these made-up names of companies I never heard of. Maybe thin out those that aren't renting properly, but it's not fair for us who rent to families that come in, that they can't have their three-day weekend at the beach like they have been doing for a decade. Decades, I'm sorry. So I just think we need modifications. I think we need phase one to work its way through so we can work through those solutions. The solutions need to be found, but to just strip us of this and so quickly without sitting and having the time to do that is unfair to all the property owners. We want our privileges to stay. We have not violated them. You've cut down 4th of July, which was fabulous, and the town is much better. It's not worth. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much for calling. Okay, you're on.
Hi, my name is Dr. Carl and I own seven units in Newport, all within hearing distance of where I live. I have five to seven security cameras on all of my buildings and I monitor, like most of the people that spoke, the short-term rental owners that are there that spoke tonight, I applaud all of them because we are a group of the elite and we should not be compared to the owners that just let mayhem happen. We do not allow that. Our, our rental agreements, people complain about them because they're so ironclad, you know, looked over by lawyers and the restrictions. I've, I've, since I was five years old, have been going to vacation rentals in Newport Beach and I've lived on the peninsula for 50 years. Some of the worst parties I've seen and the repeated offenses of constant pot smoke are the yearly people. If you're telling us to go to a six-night minimum, we're out of business. We're out of business in the winter and what will, our buildings will be replaced with our UCI students. And now instead of having one car with a family of five, you're going to have five cars for each of the students that are stuffing themselves in our units and our complete frat parties on the weekends. I just really, really beg you do not go beyond a three-night minimum. You will ruin so many of us. My husband was set up to buy a duplex a week ago and you implemented a restriction that made us take a second look and we're, we're not going to buy another, a building because of the short-term rental status. That's what we intended to use it for. It would have been two doors from our house. I literally can lay in bed and listen to my unit. And I feel that, that that is living on the property. I listen, I hear noise, I, I look on my phone at my security cameras. How much better can you get than that? Why are you comparing me to people that live out of state that have, don't even know what's going on? I wish you could differentiate us. I really, really respect all you guys for being there. I know you are, the glass over. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you for calling. Okay, you're on.
Hi, my name is Scott Carpenter and I own a local property management company. A little bit of background, I started this company to lead corporate life to help take care of my boys that have special needs and also to build some relationships within my community. I really, really disagree that this is not an attempt to take away STRs. It really and truly is an attempt to take away STRs. Going to a six-night minimum or an owner-occupied base rule will severely harm owners and businesses and frankly, it will put some very good people out of business. It's shocking that you're being presented with this without no economic analysis of what may or may not happen based on these rules. So let me give you a little numbers from my business and some national data that give you a little bit more color. It might be as much as a 50% reduction in short-term rental revenue. That's about $2 million on transit occupancy taxes. However, there's a company called AirDNA, which is not part of Airbnb. It suggests that 86% of the rentals here in Newport Beach are six nights or less. 86% of the rentals are six nights or less. That, if that's not killing a business, I'm not exactly sure what would be killing a business. So let's assume that it's 50%. $2 million in TOTS is $20 million in revenues that are going to be lost by owners. Many of my clients, they're retirees, they're families with children. That's money out of their retirement plan. That's money out of a college fund. The impact to other businesses, the indirect business, the, the direct businesses, that could amount as much as $100 million of a hit to this, to the, to the local economy. Many of these owners hire really good property managers. They professionally manage it. Again, without a proper economic impact, this has become a politicized issue. I don't think that you could realistically vote on something without fully understanding the economic impact. A six-night minimum is going to prohibit a lot of families from visiting Newport Beach. We'll basically be telling them that you're not welcome here. You don't have access to the coast because you can't spend enough money to go to six months or six nights. I can tell you that these new ordinances, they haven't even taken effect yet. Let's let phase one happen. Let, let's do the right thing with phase one. I mean, for Pete's sake, phase one hasn't even started yet. So we don't even know what the impact of it is. And again, it's been a hard year for short-term renters. We were singled out, the only industry singled out with COVID, saying, hey, you need to close. It's, it's starting to kick the wounded dog. It's, it literally is becoming very anti-business and I hope that you send this back to staff for a better economic impact and, and better understanding of what we're really voting on. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, you're on.
Hello?
Hello.
All right, my name is Jennings Rebley. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I live on Newport Island. I lived here for now 25 years. I used to live in the war zone, so to speak, on 36th Street. And we were very fortunate to come here and be able to construct a single-family residence. If, if I could indulge you for just a moment, I wonder how many of the five commissioners sitting there have actually been on Newport Island? Did you raise your hand? I don't.
All of us.
I see one, two, all of you?
All of us.
Oh, good. I didn't know that. That's great. Because we've told people when we moved here that we live on Newport Island and many people who lived in Newport Beach have no idea where it is. And that's good as far as I'm concerned. When we moved here, there were very few families with children. Now there's many families in, in a single-family residence. They've converted the, the duplex lot to a single-family residence. And I would say that's going to be almost 100% on this island in not too many years. It's a very, very wonderful place to live. We're being impacted incredibly badly by these short-term rentals. We'd like to see that minimized. I'd certainly like to see it stopped in terms of our island. We can't have 20% of our, of our residents here renting out their homes or 25 or 50%. We all got shocked at how this thing has escalated in the last four years. And we probably were asleep at the wheel. We should have started much earlier than this. So we obviously need something to be done and we're looking to the city and the committees of the city to help us moderate this to the point where it's livable again. I really appreciate the time you're putting in this and the effort and I encourage you to pass these motions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Emily. All right, you're on.
Nancy Gardner. Nancy Gardner?
Councilwoman, could you mute your television?
I just did.
We're still getting some echo here. There we go.
Okay. I would urge you to make, put a limit on the number of short-term permits. The reason for this is that it does impact neighborhoods so greatly. We had a problem like this some years back when we dealt with short-term living, I mean, excuse me, sober living. And neighbors were complaining because it was impacting the residential character. And we had many of the same situations of people owning these, making some income, extra income from them, but the impact was too great. And I have experience of that. I live in Corona Del Mar. People live on both sides of me for 40 years. I unfortunately died. On one side now is a short-term rental. And it's, it's quite a change that sometimes the people are very nice and quiet to come, sometimes they're not. When, in both cases, the prop owner makes the money. In the second case, I pay the price. It really does change a neighborhood. So I would say let's not increase the number, let's put a lid on the number of permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, you're on.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Whitmire. And I'm a long-term resident of Corona Del Mar. 35 years I've been on the Board of Directors of the Corona Del Mar Chamber for a number of years. My husband and I own a duplex in Corona Del Mar on Pointcetta. For these 35 years, we have long-term rental in our back unit. We live in the front. We have experienced being the next-door neighbor of a short-term rental and I've lost six months of sleep. I think that, I'm talking from the perspective of the residents, not a business community. We are a residential community and it's appalling to be living next door to a hotel where people are coming and going, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, waking us up, ruining our sleep night after night. My tenants complaining, my long-term, five-year tenants complaining about their annoyance from these short-term rentals. I think it's interesting that these business owners think that they have more rights than the residents. A long-term tenant is a resident of the community. And to think that these vacationers can come and ruin our quiet enjoyment of life in Corona Del Mar and frankly ruining our community. What I am is one of the residents who's suffering in silence. I have a petition signed by many of my residential neighbors. I have never made a formal complaint regarding my next door because I am a good neighbor. So you can add me to this number of formal complaints and I can add my petition of many dozens of people who have signed and add them to this list. I am asking you to please don't be used by these internet companies. Preserve our life in Corona Del Mar. Otherwise, we are going to turn into a beach vacation loud and to think that someone can be happy with parties that last till 11 o'clock at night? How would you like to live next door to that? It's a nightmare, believe me.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, you're live. Can you please turn off your television?
Yes.
Great, thank you. You're live now.
Yes, this is Scott McFetters and I live on Newport Island. And I was, I wish I was at the meeting, but I'm not because I'm in Utah. But I wanted to call because we've had several problems on Newport Island and it's all changed since I bought my house there like two years ago. I think there was three total permits and now there's 17. And a lot of them are in the section where I'm in, at the end of 38th Street and Channel. And it's, I think, I think the chair, when you made a point on the Santiago House, that the makeup of the neighborhood should be consistent. And we're consistently a residential neighborhood with single-family use of the lots. I think, I think in our, our town, it's like 85%, if not higher. And it's creating a big nuisance for everybody on the island and it's game-changing from residents that have been there for a long time that are trying to walk around there to, to myself who have a house on the water. And you get all the noise from the people next door and they just keep coming and coming and coming. And it's like Groundhog Day every day. It's just disruption, disruption. And a lot of us have, are working out of the house or you have kids that are working out of the house, you have kids that are home and they have a life too. And they have every right to be able to sleep at night and have quiet enjoyment, which we, we we, which we don't on the island anymore. Um, it's also surrounding us too on the island. On the other house on the water that we have across from you, uh, in the Finley Track too, we have the same issue where where we keep hearing how we have all these great people that that are running these, uh, operations, great operators. But what I'm finding is like the ones from out of town, uh, like the Avon stays to the, even Seabreeze, they, who, they're not setting their police these properties when they're running out a two bedroom place on the water, and there's 20 people there. We, we're policing it. We're the ones that have to call, we're the ones that have to complain. Um, all you need to do is go to one of their sites, like at Seabreeze, and try to file a complaint. It's very difficult because it's hard to find who to talk to and then to get a resolution. So anyway, I'm, I just want to make sure you're aware that it's a huge residential island, and this problem's just come up in the in the last two years, and that's why we're really upset. And one of the things that that we feel that you should, you can do, and it goes by Coastal Commission, is own and occupy it on Newport Island, where if you want to rent it out, you've got to be, you've got to occupy it on that island. And I'm not saying that for Newport Beach, because every neighborhood needs to decide what's important to them. But we feel on Newport Island, it's important, and we've done surveys, and we've, um, talked to all the neighbors, and it's a huge majority of the island that's that backs that. So thank you for your time, and appreciate all your efforts.
Great, thank you, Mr. McFetters. Okay, you're on, but can you please mute your television?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, just please mute your television.
Hi, uh, my name is Charles Shala. I live in Bakersfield, uh, California, of course, up north. I discovered Newport Beach about 10 years ago, and I thought, wow, this has got to be heaven on earth. Uh, we started going for short term rental. I am a small business owner. I cannot get away from my business for more than three, four days at a time. And, uh, I cannot afford to stay for a six night minimum over there. We were at Newport about a couple of weeks ago on 34th Street. Uh, we're a family of five. I have a 15 year old son and a twin girl that are 10, that they love to go to Newport. They love to go to the beach, they love to ride their bicycles on the boardwalk. And if you guys implement the six day minimum, this will devastate us. We, whenever I tell my kids we're going to Newport, it's like unbelievable to them. Uh, I have Angelina and Giselle, they're 10. They just want to tell you hi and tell you how much they love Newport.
Hi, my name is Angelina.
And I'm Giselle.
We are 10 years old, and we love to go to Newport Beach, and we love to go to Jane's Corn Dogs. So please let us stay.
Please allow us to stay, um, for a short term, and we love, because we love to go to Newport Beach.
So I just want you to please consider the the short term stay because it really affects a lot of hardworking Americans that cannot afford to go for a six night minimum. And we, we've been going there for 10 years. We are a very respectful family. We care about the properties as if it's our own. I've met many owners over there over the years, and, uh, they're all very nice, and they loved us to stay at their places as well. And, you know, so I hope that you guys consider not implementing the six day minimum, please. And, you know, I'm planning another trip to Newport before school starts, and hopefully I'm able to do so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shala. And yes, we do like Jane's Corn Dogs here as well. Okay, you're on.
Hello, Chairman, and I want to apologize for my earlier disaster.
That's okay.
That's why I usually make my speeches in person. I represent bond that's still protecting our Newport, and we decided to research this topic, and I have a background in research. And we did two things. We made an Excel sheet with about 60 cities all up and down the California coast with population, number of rentals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that can be accessed. The second thing we did, which I sent to you, is a short, meaning five page, research paper, um, synthesizing the five most important negative effects of out of control short term rentals. I did that by examining all of the research that had been done in the United States about coastal California. Everything from Harvard Law to the University of Tokyo, which said one on LA, Cornell, uh, lots of institutes. And there are so many negative effects of short term rentals. Now, let it be said that the people in the room tonight, most likely, I have no doubt, run a very good short term rental program. But that doesn't take care of the bad apples. We have people that buy houses from other countries and never see the property and rent it to anybody that comes along. Along the California coast, uh, we are an outlier as far as per capita short term rentals. We have much more than anybody else. Uh, Santa Monica, um, is very strict, small car mail, um, money can be, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I wish that you would read my paper because former Councilwoman Nancy Gardner mentioned a topic that is super important but gets very short shrift, and that is the sense of community. But one more thing, we're going to have to come up with 4,832 ha, more housing units at every, in this state mandated by the, in this community mandated by the state. Every time we turn a short term rental, a long term rental, into a short term rental, which happens, or a house is sold, and we lose another one of those houses because long term rentals count just like ownership. And we have many people in this community who do rent long, uh, long term. So I wish you would read the paper because we put a lot of time in on it, and we do have this big, long Excel sheet that is quite informative. And thank you for listening to me.
Great, great, thank you, Ms. Elston. Okay, you're on.
Hello. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Gina Unsworth, and I live on Newport Island. I found it very interesting, all the points this evening. I thank everybody for their input and the time into it. There's just a couple of points I'd like to make. One is the buildings themselves, the houses that are constructed, are made for outdoor living. They're going higher and having outdoor areas on the roof to allow people to party and enjoy the outside for, you know, into the evening. The acoustics are not taken into account when the permits are given, and so a lot of these short term rentals are in alleyways, which amplifies the noise, and at the water, which again carries the noise. So I think that the way the houses are constructed and the separation that the permits are being looked at should actually be combined and look at how congenial is it to a neighborhood and a residential area to give more permits, rather than just thinking of it as a numbers game, taking into other, um, accounts like, say, acoustic. The second point I'd like to make is that it is a residential area, yet so many people are talking about how it's affecting their business. I think that's the wrong way to look at it, and I think that it should be kept as a residential area. If anybody was to come around tonight, for example, with somebody in a wheelchair, I can guarantee you they could not wheel that wheelchair around on the sidewalk. And I think that's a terrible shame to stop people who have disabilities coming here and maybe elderly people who need sidewalk space. So I think there's a few factors that should be considered, and I don't think that just business alone should be, you know, the main factor for saying, increase the number of days or increase the number of rentals. I do feel that those business people should have looked into it as a business opportunity and know that there are highs and lows. Everybody else, particularly through this COVID time, is having to suffer some consequences with their work, and I think that those property rentals should also consider that. And I thank you for your time and appreciate all your input. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, you're on.
Hi, my name is Lori Hamel, and I have a small owner, I had one bedroom, short term rental and duplex in Corona Del Mar. Um, I believe this hasn't been a transparent approach with phase one and phase two. I spoke, um, last week at City Council, and I had no idea another phase was even coming. I was pretty shocked when I found out. No notices were sent to active permit holders of changes, nor to the rest of the R2 owners like me that would be losing rights to ever get a permit. I feel lucky that I already have one. I also don't think that prohibiting all new rentals is fair. There should just be a max number. I think limiting the number of nights to three has no justification or proof that it has less strain or complaints than longer term stays. A three night minimum would substantially reduce my revenue and the TOT, as many nights would then be unrentable with not three consecutive nights available on the calendar. All my one and two night rentals have been respectful. They're often a couple celebrating an anniversary, a business traveler for a night, um, older family visiting their kids that live in the flower streets, those type of stays. So the quality, the quantity of nights is not equate to the quality of the tenant. And limiting the number of nights will just make it unprofitable for all of us to run a short term rental. So this, in my opinion, is just a way to eliminate 100% of all of rental properties in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you're on.
Good evening, Chair Wiegand and members of the Commission. My name is Charles Klob. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate Chair Wiegand on his ascension to the chairmanship. It was overdue. I'd like to talk about a few things that haven't been discussed tonight. Firstly, this action is recommended by three members of the elected City Council. Um, that committee has, uh, put this together after some time. It takes four members of the City Council to adopt something, whether it is what's adopted by you tonight or not. Secondly, the city budget is nearly $400 million. The $4 million in TOT drop is a drop in the bucket at this year's, um, at a recent meeting of the Finance Committee, Mayor O'Neill and members of the Finance Committee found a way to cut $30 million out of the budget without cutting any services or staff, so the loss of $4 million is negligible. Additionally, there are 87,000 residents of Newport Beach. There are less than 1,600 permit holders, many of which don't live here and don't vote here. The residents are pretty clear in their position about this. That should be noted. And then lastly, uh, Simone knows that I've been critical of he and his staff on many occasions. Tonight, I want to commend them for their report and the work they've done on this and support everything that they've done and recommend that they, that you adopt this. Lastly, if, um, you need support at the Coastal Commission, I'll be happy to develop a coalition of residents to support your actions at the Coastal Commission if it's indeed adopted by the Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klob. Okay, you're on. Hello, you are on. Could you please mute your television?
Alert the Barrio Cartel.
All right, next one, please. Before that gets out of hand. Okay, you're live.
Yeah, my name is Mike Adenoff. Um, I am an owner of Beachview Realty. Uh, we do short term rentals, manage short term rentals. We also own a duplex on 35th Street, and we also live, are a local resident here on the peninsula, what would be considered the war zone. But, uh, my main, uh, point would be, it just seems the issue is primarily enforcement, whether, pardon me, the number of days isn't, whether it's three day, two day, five day, six day, eight day minimums, it's what the complaints are enforcement of issues with the renters, uh, and, and so I think the emphasis really needs to be on enforcement. I think a lot of suggestions has been on waiting, particularly with the previous ordinance that's been passed, to see how that, uh, weighs itself out. Um, I know that, at least in our business, with our, the property owners that we serve, um, they've got mortgages to pay. The the six night minimum will really affect their off season quite substantially. Many of them, if not most of them, or all, will prefer then to go to the three month, nine month, which then forces to student rentals. And we have had issues with student rentals, being a resident down here, raising my kids here for years, and, you know, the parking issues increases. If it's a four bedroom right now, you know, we, we have a maximum of eight people to 10, um, and they might come in one or two cars. If it's a four bedroom, it does, you're going to have at least four to five to six, depending on on what the owner allows to rent as a student rental in the off season. Parking is a problem. We have a, real quickly, we have a situation when the covert situation happened, we had, we offered our owner, they wanted to go long term. We had one of our owners do that. We have a long term renter in there. Um, the difference with long term rental and short term rental, short term, we could evict immediately upon house rules. We have a fellow that is renting illegally, subletting with Airbnb, and we have to go through this incredible process of eviction. In the meantime, he's still renting Airbnb and creating a nuisance to the neighborhood. We're doing everything we possibly can, and we can't just go in and kick him out. I don't, I think the three night minimum is reasonable. Uh, it works. That's what we enforce on, in our, our business. I know some are advocating a two night. I'm not familiar with that. I can't address that. But I know a six night is just, it's just going to change it materially, particularly in the off season and for so many of us that are paying a mortgage.
Great, thank you.
It just, it just doesn't work in the off season. Thank you very much for.
Appreciate it. Okay, you're, you're, you're live, but can you please mute your telephone? Or sorry, your TV.
Uh, yes, my name's Alan Morcos. We have owned a duplex on Balboa Island since the late 1960s and have done short term rentals. As you know, Balboa Island has been a short term rental community since the 1920s. We've never had a problem. We've always had really good tenants. In fact, a lot of our neighbors' families stay in our duplex when they come to visit. We do have a property manager. We have a 17 page contract that incorporates the noise ordinance, so if everybody, and all the other requirements by Newport Beach, if everybody abided by these rules, there wouldn't be a problem. Most, I know most of the merchants on Marine Avenue, and probably 80% of their business comes from short term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe that's our last caller. Okay, great. Does staff have any comments for the record? Um, I think there were a couple of questions asked, you know, through us, um, earlier in the discussion, so I'm not sure if we still have those, but.
Thank you, Chair. Go ahead and try to answer some of these questions with regards to, um, one of the questions about comparing Newport to the other cities, that's on a unit by unit basis. We didn't compare, um, square footage of cities, but she had brought that up. How many hotel rooms in the city? About 3,200, plus or minus 100. Um, and then Mr. Moser brought up the issue with regards to assignment, that item 3D allows assignments, um, in the implementation plan. plan, where if you have an active short-term lodging permit at the time of adoption, you can go ahead and assign that. So, that's all the questions I have.
I think there were a couple more on items that might have been related to Phase One, like trash collection, tier rental. I think there was a couple on there, but I, I think those were mostly probably ones addressed at the council meeting already. That's not in our purview tonight.
That's correct.
All right, and since that's, and that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Yeah, Commissioner Lauer.
And maybe because there's probably some other things. So, does permits, do they, with this, do they go away if a person sells their home? And that's, I, it's probably in there. I just might have overlooked that part. So, in other words, if it, so, does it, basically, does it run with the property, or does it run with the individual? Like, so--
It doesn't, it does not run with the individual. It runs with the property, and it can be assigned.
Okay. And I had one other question. I heard reference to DOCS. I mean, both Chairman Wiegand, when I were asking, DOCS and LUGO, or DACS and LUGO, was there?
Yeah, DOCS, DACS. I think it's DACS and LUGO. Like, we heard that referenced a couple times.
Is that to reference to anything that--
Sure. So, there are DACS and LUGOs. That, those are issued by the police department. LUGO stands for loud and unruly gathering. So, if hypothetically, if there's a party atmosphere, a police, a police officer shows up to the party, it's loud, they would issue this citation. We call it a DAC, and that's referenced in our municipal code. And, and if it is, becomes a more of a problem, more of a heightened violation, then becomes a LUGO. LUGOs and DACS can be up for suspension. That's already in our code. That's already under review. But it gives police department authority for that evening hours when we don't have code enforcement. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Rosin, want to lead us off, or anyone want to tee this one up? I think we're all wanting to do something, but we're--
I think we already heard that ordinance 2020-15 goes into effect on August 15?
August 13.
13. So, this is already in place. The purview of this commission tonight is basically to discuss the local coastal program amendment.
That's correct.
And make sure that it's in compliance with whatever council chooses to move forward with. And I think staff already understands that whatever council determines its policy becomes the, the document that we're discussing would need to be amended anyway, in alignment with whatever council moves forward with. So, what are we voting on?
Yeah. I, I think when, just to refresh us, because we had a lot of public comment, but it's really just, you know, three items: cap on new permits, limit on renewals, and the number of night stays. A would be owner that's on-site, and then B would be owner that's off-site. So, I would say those three--
Recommendations to--
Yeah.
To the council.
You're right.
And there are recommendations. So, if we're going to make a recommendation, I think what I heard this evening was some consistency associated with the three-day minimum. Sounds reasonable to me, especially from an enforcement position or situation. I, I really do believe when I look at these statistics that there may be a disconnect between PD and code enforcement, and really, do these really reflect what's happening out there? So, these are comments more than anything. And, you know, since the mid-'80s, I've, since I was old enough to understand what the war zone is, that's always been there. So, long-term, people probably cause a lot of these problems as well. And I see this as an enforcement issue. So, if I'm going to make a recommendation to council, my recommendation would be there be a dedicated individual to enforcement of this, and that it would be consistent on a three-day minimum across the board. And so, I haven't made a motion, but that's generally what I'm thinking.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that, Commissioner Rosin. It's tough to kind of go first on some of these things, so it's nice to have, have your voice lead the way. And, you know, those three items are kind of what, what our purview is tonight, you know. Do we want to do a cap on new permits, limit those that are in the renewal process, and discuss those three nights? So, yeah, Commissioner Elmore.
What's going on in Newport Island? Are we, are we enforcing what's, the short-term rentals there, or is it, it seems like there's an uproar. It's pretty interesting. So, I think that needs to be dealt with on a separate, on a separate notion. So, based upon the three things that we're supposed to talk about, you know, I, I see the six nights, if the idea is not to kill the business, but just to limit it, I see the six nights right there killing a large amount of, of business for these rentals. I think if that's the way that it's drafted, if the six nights is implemented, that's probably going to automatically lead to people dropping their licenses, and it's going to have a, a pretty dramatic effect. When I look at the enforcement stats, they're really underwhelming to me. I don't understand, and I agree with Commissioner Rosin, that there must be a disconnect, because if these are the complaints based upon the numbers, and these are the citations based upon the numbers, I don't even know what the problem is. This is, it's pretty minimal, if, in my opinion, by looking at these stats, especially the fact that they're going down, and on a percentage basis of the overall, it's, it's, there, you know, 40 citations based upon the total number of permits, you're at like 2%. So, I, I'm not quite understanding that disconnect there. We have a Phase One in place. The Phase One that's in place, I hasn't had an opportunity to even have a shot. And I think that this is an enforcement issue, and I would like to see a Phase One have, have a chance to be implemented, be enforced, and see new numbers surrounding it, to understand if we have to take a position to all of a sudden eliminate six nights for people's income, and eliminate these, these other dramatic, these drastic moves. I mean, so, I think it would be prudent to see the results of the, of the Phase One. And I think it would be prudent to, you know, make sure that we're really enforcing, and these people with this Phase One, now, my understanding is that they have two strikes, and then they're out. So, I think that will have, give it an opportunity to flush out some of the bad operators, and the good operators have a chance to do what they're, what they're, what they're doing. So, I, I can't support these findings from my position. Again, we're planning commissioners. We're land use guys. And so, for us, I think, just sort of make recommendations and set new, what it should be, is not, I think that's, that's a City Council agenda item. I think that's, we should, in my opinion, I think, I can't support it. We should go back to council. They should figure it out. They should redraft it. And, and that's where, that's why I'm on this.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Elmore. Do you see any of the recommendations at all of those, kind of those three things, that you would lean to supporting at all, or is there any, it's pretty much across the board on that?
Well, look, I just, I think that people have property rights. And, you know, maybe we're in a disconnect, the fact that, you know, we, we're saying that the 30 days is a privilege. I, I don't, if, you know, if Aunt Jane wants to rent my, my single-family residence for, for three nights, two nights, one night, like, I should be able, in my opinion, to rent it to Aunt Jane. So, that's right, because it's my, that's the way I see this. So, I, again, I can't support any of this.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. Commissioner Kleiman, you're up.
Thank you. So, I mean, I'll echo some of the things that have been said in terms of this being more of an enforcement issue. It sounds like, putting the Newport Island issue aside, it seems like, number one, I don't know if they have an HOA, or if they're able to get organized enough to do that, or the minimum, because that's obviously the, the most effective way to limit this, is, you know, the areas that do have HOAs, whether they're single-family or multifamily. You know, they can, they can be restrictive, and, you know, owners are aware of that when they purchase, and everybody signs off on that. But for Newport Island, it seems like if they're having such extreme issues, whether these units are illegal or not, they should be able to band together and notify the city of violations, and, and get these permits or unpermitted units dealt with, I would think, pretty swiftly. However, getting back to the issue at hand, I'm always reluctant to make recommendations as it relates to our local coastal plan, that I feel like there's very little likelihood that the Commission, Coastal Commission will support, whether it's something that needs to be like this, an amendment, or something that could potentially be appealed to coastal. And in this case, just based on what we've seen on San Diego, their attempts alone, I, I'm just, again, hesitant to sign off on something that's going to be more of staff's time, more of city resources, to essentially be shut down at coastal, go back to the drawing board. I think a six-night minimum is definitely going to get shut down, and anything that's too restrictive, they're going to see right through that. They're going to see that we're trying to effectively kill this industry in our coastal area, in the coastal zone. So, that's my concern. If it were, if it were me, and this is not what we're tasked with tonight, but there are a number of things that I would like to see happen. Like, to me, this is akin to the construction issue. You know, we have a lot of construction that's always ongoing, or, you know, even parking. But I think a lot of similarities with the construction, where residents have gotten together, and I know CDMRA just was successful in, in implementing a new program where every, I think, only in the R2 zone, right, every construction permit requires a sign outside that has the permit number, has the phone number. It's all very clearly laid out. And I think something as simple as that for these permitted units could be extremely effective in, in making it clear to people which ones are, first of all, permitted and which are not. And secondly, who to call and have that number be 24-hour response. You know, just basic things that I think could make a very big difference in, in the enforcement. Again, that's not what we're tasked with tonight, but it just seems like some of these very restrictive things are, are maybe drastic measures in response to something that it could just be an enforcement problem, that if we are getting $4.5 million in revenue, that we should be able to dedicate some resources to enforcement that can address these issues instead of killing the whole, the whole business, which is, sounds like, been fundamental to the city for quite some time.
Thank you for, thank you, Commissioner Kleiman. Simone, do you, is there any precedent? Commissioner Kleiman brought up a good point on Coastal Commission. Is there any precedent there of cities restricting? Have they been, so there's cities been successful at, you know, bringing down night limits? You know, some of these proposals that we're putting forth that will ultimately go to the Coastal Commission, have they been successful?
So, so the California Coastal Commission actually has a policy out there. And, you know, they, they do a couple things. They recognize that cities need to regulate to, to protect their neighborhoods and improve quality of life. But they do also recognize that short-term lodging provides a low-cost visitor accommodation. So, I think the Coastal Commission kind of struggles between the two also. It's not just cities. They have approved short-term lodging. It's, it's not that they deny it, or decline it, or throw our amendment out. They will discuss it with us. They will want to find a solution with us, with whatever that solution is. Again, it's, it's whatever they, whatever our council approves has to go to the Commission. Whatever the Commission approves has to go back to the council. So, there's definitely a back and forth between the two agencies. Coastal Commission will approve short-term lodging programs. They will.
Gotcha. And for tonight, we're tasked with, you know, saying we make a recommendation or not. Regardless, council's going to, going to be hearing this item, will go through the same process that we're going to. Mr. Klob on the phone made up a good point. There are three council members who put these in front of us, so they just need one more vote, essentially. So, you know, we either say we reject it, and, you know, perhaps when they have that discussion, they may say, you know, pounce hand to the Commission. But if we come up with maybe some compromises, then that might work well for the business community, too. So, you know, I, I think we ultimately, and the way I'm seeing this kind of go down, is take each item and, and vote. I'm not sure if staff would agree that that's, you know, probably the best--
Chair Wiegand, that probably is the most efficient way to do it, is sort of take, you know, each individual issue. And, you know, note that, you know, even with the, the six-night consecutive stay, for instance, if, if the Commission is not comfortable with that number, but thinks that there is a number out there that's, you know, kind of the, the magic number that you might all agree to, or majority can, can agree to, then certainly you can, you know, recommend a modification to that. And the same with respect to the, you know, owner occupied, the three-day limit as well. So, you know, there is room for, you know, negotiations and these discussions. And, you know, it probably would be most efficient to kind of take each, since it is a lot there to digest, and just sort of big picture, how it is you want to modify each of those, if, if at all.
Great. Yeah, that's kind of why I just want to guide us through this process, because it is very controversial, and there's, obviously, with the comments that we had. So, again, just so you have it, it's the cap on new permits, the limit on renewals, and the number of night stays. And there's two options, or two different types of night stays that are up on for discussion. So, if I, yes, Commissioner Kleiman.
All right. I just wanted to ask another question that I had noted earlier and forgot to ask. We've talked a lot about revenue and, and the TOT tax. I'm curious to know if there's any requirement in the city's application and permit process for IRS reporting. I feel like we got a couple of emails that alluded to, you know, whether these, these rentals were being reported or not. And I, and I wondered if that would be one way of almost self-regulating. So, I'm, I'm thinking there are probably a number of, of these that aren't being reported, and that would be one way to sort of filter out some of those. Is that something the city tracks, or not at all?
So, the, the TOT that's paid is on the honor system, and we do spot checks with an audit program. We're not checking every single one every single year. Maybe it's a handful a year. We do, do auditing. And, and that's the most we do. We don't work through the IRS to see what they're reporting or not reporting.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Chair. Back to your--
Oh, no, no, no problem. I think that's what we're kind of doing right now, is just kind of weeding out what we think we want to do to move forward. Commissioner Klosmer, you're on.
So, I think that the way that this is drafted is something that the California Coastal Commission is going to view as us limiting access to the beach. So, I think the way that it's drafted is it's going to fall on deaf ears there, and it's going to get kicked back to us. So, I think we should think about some ways to revise this that may be acceptable to counsel the Coastal Commission and residents of the community that view this issue on, on both sides. With respect to the limit on permits, I think we should look at a cap on permits. I don't know what the right number is there, but I do think that moving forward, property owners should be allowed to apply for short-term lodging permits. Currently, there are 1,524 permits that are active. So, I think a number that is higher than that would be a good cap. I think maybe I'll open that up to discussion to other commissioners to see if they think a number 1,600, 1,700 is a compromise there. With respect to the minimum night stay, I, I don't agree with the six-night minimum. And I don't think that we should differentiate between owner occupied and non-owner occupied. I think we should just maybe discuss something across the board. I don't know that a one-night minimum is, is really going to improve things versus having a three-night minimum. But I think, I don't know that I would support a minimum higher than three.
Staff, if I could just kind of touch on what she's mentioning, Commissioner Klostermeyer was mentioning. As far as a cap, was that ever discussed at the council level, or at the ad hoc, or, you know, was there, I guess what I'm wondering is, we're just over 1,500, or 1,524, that Commissioner Klostermeyer said. Even if we said we wanted a cap at 1,500, could we technically be non-conforming for X amount of years until that 24 got to 1,499, and then created some type of lottery system, or some type of, I mean, they do that for the moorings in the harbor. So, when a mooring becomes available, there's some system in place that allows somebody to pick up the mooring. There's a set number of moorings. So, I'm not sure if that's something that can be pulled from, you know, the harbor side of things and looked into, but, you know, maybe that's a suggestion we look to. It keeps it at 1,500. We're, you know, over slightly for now, but as these natural attrition will lower that number, but then we'll at least have a firm number. But, you know, I'm open to discussion here with commissioners if they think that number should be 16, or if that is even something that they think is reasonable, should there even be a cap at all? I don't know the other commissioners' thoughts on caps. So, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Klostermeyer. And Simone, I think I did ask if that was brought up, and I probably jumped all over you, so go for it.
So, there was a lot of discussion about having a cap that was higher than the current active permit numbers, but I think the committee was looking towards a methodology that would lower the number, not increase the number, and that was the rationale behind it. To the second part of the question with regards, can you have a program which is hypothetically a cap of 1,500, which is lower than what's active now, and you have some non-conforming? Yes, and through natural attrition, it actually comes, the number comes down, and you always stay at that lower number. Absolutely.
Great. I think, I think the trouble for us as commissioners are, were, as Mr. Moser mentioned in his comments, that we're late to the game. We're, this is our first kind of crack at this, and the councils had, you know, all the meetings and all of the things that you went through, and you went through with different town halls by individual council members, and the council members ad hoc, and then the council itself. So, I think we're struggling with it as far as a perspective, how to, we obviously heard community output, we heard business side from the owners, but I think it's still a challenge for us to put our hands around, as Commissioner Elmore said, you know, he's a land use guy, like, he sees things as property rights, and same with Commissioner Climate, she's studied the law, you know, she knows that type of stuff. So, are we stepping on it? And so, I think that's why we're all kind of having that trouble and discussion tonight. So, I think it's great that we're, you know, kind of bouncing these ideas about, and that's just what we're here to do. So, I think the council is looking for us to make a recommendation on it, and I think we're having that open discussion. And Commissioner Climate?
I think you're absolutely right, and I think the issue is we are limited in scope as to what we can consider. So, it's not like we're able to look at the whole picture and, you know, start to piece together what we think is the right solution. And, of course, based on one meeting, and even though we have received a lot of feedback, it's not comprehensive as much as, you know, staff has spent a lot of time on this, but I would agree with Commissioner Klostermeyer and Commissioner Elmore. I mean, I see this as an issue of balancing property rights for both, for the, for the, those property owners who want to rent their properties short, on a short-term basis, and for those living next door who don't want to deal with some of the issues that we heard about tonight. I will say that I lived in the village for four or five years, and it was a community with an HOA that didn't allow short-term rentals, and we had a number of issues, living very close together, but they were all from people who either owned their homes, some original owners, you know, who engaged in certain behaviors on their patios, and, you know, required everybody else to sit in their homes with their windows closed, and other, you know, six- or 12-month tenants who, you know, had multiple dogs on their patios, barking all day long and all night long, and, you know, it's not limited to these short-term tenants, but I do understand the concern for somebody who is transient, who isn't invested in the neighborhood or the community, and the difference between, you know, a family who moves in, whose kids are going to school there, who are invested in the growth and the community as a whole. So, it is a tricky balance, and I'm really not sure how to address it tonight, you know, just with these three limited items that we're to consider. I would say, though, I do think three versus six in terms of a minimum for stay would be more likely to be approved or considered by the Coastal Commission, for starters. And as for a cap, I, it presents a number of other issues. You know, it's a first-come, first-served, and we start to get into this issue of, like, you know, Laguna Beach with their construction permits, you know, first come, first to apply, and, you know, things like that, where it's, it becomes limiting, and I just don't know how you do that fairly, but also how you enforce that. We already have a number of issues with enforcement, and I don't know how, you know, how you can effectively enforce that. So, that's my two cents. It doesn't get us anywhere closer to where we need to be, but...
That's all right. Any other commissioners want to, Commissioner Lowry?
Yeah, I guess, for me, I know it's kind of a recommendation, and it's, you kind of want to apply the land use type of, you know, specific situation or specific reason why we're here, and this is a recommendation, and these are some issues that we haven't really reviewed, or have a kind of an in-depth knowledge of. I'll speak for myself, does not have, does not have an in-depth knowledge on, and how that relates specifically to land use, what we're tasked with. But, you know, just kind of starting and reviewing the ordinance that was just passed a few weeks ago, I guess I just, I continue to see the disconnect of why you'd need to go to phase two right away, especially when you look at those statistics that we saw, we see. We see a dwindling number of complaints, and I guess I don't see the need for this, because I look at this, okay, well, if it's a recommendation, I hate lending my name to something to recommend, and A, I don't have that much knowledge on, and I'm actually have the potential, through my recommendation, to limit people's well-being in terms of being able to bring in this revenue, to maybe pay their bills, or pay, you know, pay their ongoing expenses in their property. I mean, a lot of people that we listen to that called and presented in front of us, you know, one or two homes, and it seems like a big portion of those, of that revenue goes to make those homes possible for them. So, to me, it's something that's premature. I can't support any three of those options, so I'm, I mean, I'm an O on all three. And I would, I would think we should make a statement here, rather, if that's the, if that's the will of this, of the planning commission, to make that known, and I think to further study to see how this ordinance plays out. That was passed a couple of weeks ago, and if complaints rise, then really bring it and do an actual study of how many caps, and how many, if there should be caps, and how they're renewed, and night minimums. I just, I, you know, I can't imagine a six-night stay minimum. I just, that does not seem viable, and it just seems like a back doorway to kind of, you know, pretty much limit, limit short, you know, short-term, short-term stays by draconian, I guess, measures. So, I would be a no on all three.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. I'll ask Staff one more question on one-to-two-night rentals. What's the percentage of, do we know how many one-to-two-night rentals are done in a year in the city? And also, while I'm just asking, if there's the ones that are onsite, owners that live onsite, what's the percentage of those owners who live onsite that are part of the 1,524?
So, the percentage of the one-to-two-night rentals, you know, I don't, I'd be guessing, and I just don't have the harts numbers to tell you what's the percentage, you know, just listening from the operators. Some of the bigger operators have told us that, you know, the kind of, it's not the one night, it's more kind of in-between, as far as kind of the popular number of nights, and how many are owner occupied. I don't have a number for that either.
Gotcha. The reason why, I think we saw a lot of the correspondence from folks saying that they were okay with the three-night, and I talked to one of the owners that owns 80-something properties in Newport, and he was pretty cool with going to three nights. So, it seemed like, from my perspective, on most of the communications, three nights were okay. Now, the reason why I asked about the one-to-two-night and onsite owners is, if you're an onsite owner, one-to-two nights may be more regulating, but, you know, my mom lives next to one in Costa Mesa, and the one-to-two nights are the biggest problem. And I think, I think that's really what's driving this issue, is the parties and the inability for PD to enforce, and we've discussed, you know, enforcement in phase one should have more enforcement. But, I do think that there's some merit to the three-day, to the three-day limit. We can always go back, Staff. We can always go back, or city council can always go back and reamend if they think that this is too aggressive, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, there are, you know, means to say, okay, the next council, you know, it falls on them, and this current council sees, like I said, three of them are part of this ad hoc. So, I think we've all kind of talked it out. So, I'm just going to throw out a motion and just see where we go. If it's a no, then the recommendation goes no to the council, that we vetted it. We had thorough discussion. We had thorough feedback from the public, and we did our due diligence and didn't steamroll the process. So, I'll throw out there that, for me, I'll support, make a motion to support the status quo at 1,524, putting a cap at 1,500, and creating some type of lottery system similar to what they do for the moorings. And so, that basically covers the cap on new permits and the limits on renewals. So, you know, that says 1,500, we're non-conforming for now. Those 24 will fall off at some point, and then once you get to 1,499, you get the ability to institute some application process that goes through a similar lottery, where you're happy you just got number 1,500. And then as those others fall off, others will get an opportunity to be a participant of that program. And then for me, three nights across the board, I'm okay for that for now, and see how those things go, and if there's a problem, the city's losing drastic revenues, then we, then that council needs to institute some type of measures to try to get those numbers back up and to change those. But, I do think the one-to-two nights are a problem in our city, and I think that that, curtailing that should ease some of the concerns by the residents, and I think three nights will, should pass muster with Coastal Commission. I'm not sure if the limit does, but, you know, it kind of plays kind of a game here, that we can at least say we like some of these ideas, but it's a compromise. And I think compromise, the problem with it is, both sides aren't happy. You know, some of you guys might not be happy that it tramples on some property rights. Some of the residents might not feel we did enough, but at least we've come to something, and the council can work off it. And, you know, ultimately, they're going to make that decision regardless of what we say, but I think we have vetted out, and they'll study the notes of what we've done. And there's already three council members that support it. They just need one more, and it's an election year. So, you know, things are up on the table. So, I'll make that motion, and we'll see if it has a second. If not, then we'll, somebody will make a recommendation that we say no. Yes, sir?
I'll make an alternate motion to deny the project. And just to kind of piggyback a little bit on Commissioner Climate's comment, I think, especially with the cap and what you're discussing, there's going to be unintended consequences in how this forms and how this rolls out, in which they've studied and we haven't. And so, for us to put some form of a structure in place on the fly that we're just kind of coming up with right now, and to have that be truly, I think, needs to get flushed out. They've studied this, they've gone through this. Again, so I think, instead of trying to piecemeal together, make an alternate motion to deny it, let them go back to them, let them come back to us with something that, you know, before they know where our heads at.
I'll second.
Okay, that motion is on the table with a second, so call the vote. Is that correct? All right, call the vote. Oh, commentary from Commissioner Climate is okay? Yes, okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Klostermeyer, sorry.
It's confusing.
Yeah, we got a lot of K's up here.
It's pretty close.
Kitting too is another K, and then we had Kramer as the other one previously.
Just, just curious, if we do kick this back, do we kick it back with recommendations for what we would like to have studied? I feel like we've talked about some good alternatives here that maybe we just feel we're not prepared to make a decision on, just based on, speaking specifically to a cap, if we were to do something like that?
So, I think the motion on the table is to say to the council that we're making a negative recommendation to the council on all of the items.
That's correct.
Limits, days, or night stays, and, you know, caps and limits. I think that's a no, is how I read the alternate motion from Commissioner Elmore.
And then how could that play out at council?
The council essentially will, the vote will come down from us, and we'll make, we'll approve the substitute motion, or the alternative motion, and the council will have in front of them a rejection from this commission that we voted, whatever the number turns out, that we said, no, we don't like any of these ideas, and we urge you to not support them.
And they can proceed as...
Correct.
As they, as they see fit. If they want to make revisions to this, they could do that, and then it would go on to the Coastal Commission. It would just be, as this is drafted today, the planning commission does not approve of how this is drafted.
Correct.
That's correct.
But I think what you're trying to say is that you are supportive of some other solution and some alternatives that we've talked about tonight, but just not as it's drafted. So, you want your vote to reflect, right, like a support of some kind of changes, but not, not what's being brought before us today. Is that, am I understanding?
That's correct, and I don't know what the appropriate changes would be. I think maybe it's some type of a cap. I think it maybe is a less restrictive minimum on the number of nights, but yes, well stated. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Lowry.
Yeah, I mean, I'm with Sarah, anyway. I don't want to seem as, you know, so matter-of-fact on this. I just think it's a, it's a, it's a recommendation that, to me, is, when we make it, it's important, and not knowing, not knowing the unintended consequences, like Commissioner Elmore says, is very important, and you're dealing with livelihoods of people. I just, I can't, I can't, I can't recommend to approve something that I don't have the data on, and to me, it's something that community leaders, and you could have spawn, and the different groups that represent the short-term rules come together, and obviously others in the community come and talk about these specific things. And maybe these specific things have been talked about in these previous meetings. I just, and I read everything, and I just didn't, I didn't see that there, so.
I would agree with that, and also just the enforcement issue. If there's a way to work with the public and residents to get a better enforcement policy in place, or, like I said, some signage that makes it very easy and very clear for people to report violations, and then you hopefully get rid of all the bad operators, and maybe if we revisit this at some point, if council kicks back, or if Staff, you know, has another...
Yeah, I wish that was in our purview, but that, the enforcement thing, we just unfortunately don't get a say, and that's what makes this challenging, I think, for all of us right now, is we're late to the game. We get this one opportunity to discuss this item, and...
Agreed. I just want to be clear that we heard both sides of the argument. We, I want residents to know that we heard their concerns as well, and it's not that we don't want to provide some relief for them. Like I said, we're trying to balance the property rights on both sides. So, I just want to make that clear as well, that this isn't just a denial of, hey, we don't, we support, we support these owners with their short-term rentals, and we don't support the local residents. And we do, but this, the way it's drafted today is difficult, and making a decision in a vacuum is, I think, just not prudent, as Commissioner Elmore said.
Okay, okay. So, we have the alternative motion on the table. We've got a motion and a second, so the vote will be called now? Called now.
The motion carries forward, too, with Commissioners Rosine and Wagon voting no.
Great. Thank you, guys, for that. I know it's a tough topic, and you guys put in a lot of thought to that, and it's great that we're all participating. I think that's the purpose of why we're here, and the council will go their route, and we did our job. So, thank you, guys, for your patience. Staff, should we take a...
Staff, should we take a five-minute rest? I don't want, I know at ten-thirty, the rules say we can't take any new items, so we have a moment to take a rest.
Certainly.
If that's warranted, does the commission okay with that? Just so, bathroom break for staff? Cool, five minutes, please. I'll bring us back from recess, and we're on item number four now. Industrial zoning IG zoning district code amendments PA 2020-042. The site location is the northwest corner of the city near Costa Mesa along Production Place, Sixteenth Street, and portions of Monrovia Avenue. Again, if you want to comment on this via phone, please call nine-four-nine-two-seven-zero-eight-one-six-five. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is David Blumenthal for the Planning Division. Tonight, I'm gonna be discussing the code amendment to allow wine tasting rooms within the IG zone. Now, I wanted to quickly just touch base on what a wine tasting room is, because I think this is kind of a unique use for the city of Newport Beach. What the state does is they issue what's called a Type II Wine Grower's License. That goes, the master license typically goes for winery. This is where the production of the wine actually occurs. Then, they will act, take a, issue a duplicate license for the off-site tasting room. And that's the type of use we're dealing with today. The state doesn't allow production at the tasting room site, but they do allow the sale of wine for either on- or off-site consumption. And they can only sell the wine that they're actually produced at the main winery. But those, the main winery and the wine tasting room do have to be tied together. The proposal tonight is to allow the wine tasting rooms within the IG zone. Now, the IG zone is within the areas around Sixteenth Street near Monrovia and Placentia. That is on the map. You see the areas in gray highlighted with blue around them. And as we're proposing tonight, the wine tasting rooms would be required to obtain a conditional use permit prior to commencing any operations. Now, this amendment, if it's approved, would allow wine tasting rooms, they would prohibit the sale of beer or other distilled spirits, so they'd be limited to strictly selling wine. It does allow for on- and off-site consumption of wine. However, live entertainment would be prohibited, as well as operations as a restaurant. The hours of operation within the IG zone would be limited to non-school hours, which was four to eleven Monday through Friday, and then noon to eleven on Saturday and Sunday. Additionally, the code limit would introduce new separation requirements for wine tasting rooms from schools, as well as from each other, to avoid any type of over-concentration. And what that's gonna look like, and this is looking at from Camden Hall, a five-hundred-foot separation from any school. So the building which has the wine tasting room would not be allowed to be within five-hundred feet of the school property. And then, they, to avoid over-concentration as well, we would have the proposal says to have, wine tasting rooms can't be on a property that's within five-hundred feet of another property that has a wine tasting room, and that way, that we don't end up with too many of them within the IG zone. Now, I do want to note with this map up here, we do have one wine tasting room that is in operation. It's called Orange Coast Winery, and this is the property I did highlight for the separation requirement. Orange Coast has been in operation since 2010 and was approved under an interim study overlay zone. However, the code amendments that were necessary to allow them to continue operations was not approved. They have been operating as a non-conforming use since that 2010 study has expired. Orange Coast, if this amendment is approved, Orange Coast will apply for a conditional use permit, and they will come back before the Planning Commission to obtain that CUP, to bring themselves into compliance with the proposed code amendment. Tonight's actual recommendation is to, of course, conduct the public hearing, take your CEQA action, which we feel is exempt from CEQA. And additionally, make a recommendation to the City Council that, to approve the code amendment. With that, that will conclude my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you have on this.
Great, thank you. I'll ask commissioners for questions of staff. We're good? Okay. I just had a question. So it was five-hundred feet from schools, and then five-hundred feet from said property. So said property is the winery, as, that's kind of what we're looking to do to help their issues. How many potential businesses could that lead to if, you know, you have that five-hundred beyond the five-hundred?
As it stands today, with Orange Coast operating among their current property, there would be one or two other properties within the IG zone that could accommodate a wine tasting room.
And then, so say this other one or two, let's just say one of them does, then does their five-hundred then cancel out any other? So technically, it would really just be two that could be on the site? Okay, gotcha. And then, you showed from Carden Hall, the one five-hundred, but then, was there a five-hundred from Pacifica Christian, which is the other school that's there? Is that?
There would be a five-hundred feet from Pacifica Christian as well, that is a little bit further south of what you're seeing on the aerial photos here. And Orange Coast would be more than that five-hundred feet.
Great. And then, the only other thing is there is a rec center, community rec center that's across the street, I think, from the winery. That's not included in the five-hundred, correct?
No, it's the five-hundred-foot separations for the primary and secondary education.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Okay, Exparte Communications, I'll start with Commissioner Rosine, if he's had any, and then work our way back up.
None.
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 With the consultant.
Yeah, I spoke with the consultant of the winery about the merits of the project. And I will open it up to the public hearing. And if you want to make a public comment on this item, again, the phone number is nine-four-nine-two-seven-zero-eight-one-six-five. And I think I did skip, am I supposed to go to the applicant? Or, you guys are the applicants, so I'm getting, it's getting late, sorry. Community room, I'll go to the community room for public comments, please.
Good afternoon, good evening, actually, I'm losing time, too. My name is Philip Greer. I am the consultant counsel for the Orange Coast Winery. We think that the report by staff is incredibly comprehensive and hits all of the points that would be discussed tonight. So I'm here essentially to answer any questions that the commission might have. And that's really it. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. If not, thank you very much for your consideration.
Great, thank you, Mr. Greer. Are there any phone calls? Nope. Okay. I will, I guess, since Mr. Greer was here, Commissioner Kleinman? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher. Sorry.
Members of the commission, I don't personally see how you can approve this. Although it technically is initiated by the City Council, it seems to be solely for the benefit of one property owner. The proposed ordinance is actually written in such a way that the five-hundred feet from the school is worded, it's five-hundred feet to the building where the tasting room is, because part of the parcel would be eliminated if it was five-hundred feet to the property. We've heard it's not unprecedented, because something was approved in 2010, which is now null and void. What was approved in 2010 was that you could have food processing uses in the industrial zone. What this property owner now wants, the way this is worded, and is incidentally mentioned in the staff report, is that they can now, on this industrial property, operate a tasting room only, with no production at all on the site. The winery can be in a different state or a different country, but this is a tasting room for that winery. Well, I guess it has to be in California, because it has to have a Type II license. That seems totally inconsistent with the general plan. It's, a tasting room by itself is not an industrial use in any way. It's not incidental to, or to the industrial use on the property. And then, finally, if any other California winery wanted to open a tasting room in Newport Beach by making it allowed use in this zoning district, where our code is written, they, their application would be denied unless it was in this industrial district. You cannot have, if the wine tasting room is allowed in this district, it cannot be allowed in any other district. So any other winery wanting a tasting room in Newport Beach, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Anyone else in the community room? Okay, I'll go back to the phones, because I skipped that step. Nope. Okay. All right, then I will ask staff if there's any other comment for the record. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I will bring this back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Kleinman.
So I know we have a different commission makeup than we did the last time. We had something similar, but I am definitely having deja vu as it relates to this agenda item. We saw something similar with a beer operation, right? Am I just, I dreamed that up? And then, I was a dissenting vote, but it got approved, and it went to council, and council shut it down, right? Am I remembering this correctly?
You're correct. Commissioner Kleinman.
Okay, so it was almost exactly the same thing, except that was beer, and this is wine, right?
No, that one was kind of all of the above. It was a brewery, a distillery, a winery. It was kind of allowing that, those micro establishments. So that got shut down completely. This one was, this item is strictly for wineries. It was council-initiated. There was majority support from the council to direct staff to come back with a restricted standard to allow winery.
Yeah, I see that on the, handwritten page thirty-three. Well, I mean, I was a no then, I'm a no now. This is still spot zoning to me. I don't disagree with Mr. Mosher's comments. This seems like it's essentially, as Chair Wigan pointed out, you can put one, maybe two of these businesses in this. So this is just an opportunity for this one business to go in an area that frankly doesn't belong there. So I don't know what the will of the rest of the commission is, but I don't support this.
Any other commissioners want to chime in on? Commissioner Rosine, you're chomping at the bit. So I'll kind of buy you some time. What if we denied this? What does the outlook look for the winery moving forward? I think they've been around for quite some time. There's been some discussion in our packet that discusses, you know, previous council, I think, kind of discussing their business activities. They're non-conforming now. What other avenues do we really have to kind of fix this, so that we don't lose another business in the city?
Right. So, again, for the commission, this is just a recommendation to the City Council. So, two different options. If the council denies changing the code to allow this type of use to exist, that use will have to cease operation, or convert their business model back to their original model, which was manufacturing of wine. And that's how that business first started, and then it morphed into something more retail-oriented. So the, it's a pending code enforcement case. It's an open case. We are, we're suspended until we figure out what's gonna happen with the code change. If the council adopts these code changes, then we can work with the business and keep them going.
And they're currently producing wine off-site out of city, out of some other location?
Yes, that's what my understanding, correct?
Commissioner Rosine, ready?
This is probably gonna seem like left field, but since I kind of own that, I'm gonna keep going. You know, this is interesting to me, because it really does feel like it's just for one business. And I read this thinking this was for an area, and it was intended for this space to become something interesting and different. And then, I realized, no, this is just for a single entity. You know, if this was a larger area, and it had support, this area could use something different, unique, interesting. But this seems like spot zoning after I've, you know, reviewed and heard everything. I don't know how we could support this unless there was something bigger, that's brought in a new dynamic to that area. I don't see that in this particular request. And I think that's, you know, that concept of having something interesting and new that this area could really benefit from doesn't sound like it has support anywhere. And I'm bringing that up only because I was up in central California and saw some interesting areas where this is being, this kind of use has some, there's a positive effect. If someone came in and developed a space to make it, where you go, and you visit several locations, and it seems like there would be some benefit to that. That's not what this is talking about. This is talking about for a single entity, really not much opportunity for it to exist, any other businesses to take advantage of it. I just don't understand it. So I don't think I can support this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If I can just, if I could chime in, just, you know, I wanted to clarify, well, you know, there is a possibility here, as it's currently drafted, that perhaps a limited number of parcels may be entitled to be a winery, subject to the appropriate permits. Spot zoning is typically when a smaller parcel is given sort of less rights than its surrounding parcels. And so I think that, again, while there may be one, perhaps one or just two properties that could be a winery, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily have your sort of, your quintessential case of spot zoning here. The other thing that I would add is kind of similar to the last item. If, you know, you feel that in the IG, that perhaps there should be more opportunities, and propose perhaps reducing the distance requirements, which would afford, you know, that right and/or only require a use permit in that area, then that would also, you know, allow these wineries to exist in that area, and not just, if you perceive it as only being able, beneficial to one property, that would no longer be the case.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Summerhill. I do think that that is something maybe we could discuss. I mean, the five-hundred-foot limit from the school is arbitrary, correct?
Correct.
That's just something staff came up with. It's not like a, you know, set in code. There's no A, B, C rule with that, correct?
Correct.
And the five-hundred-foot from the winery is also arbitrary, correct? That's...
That's great. I think what I recall, too, is the council gave staff direction that they wanted a separation from the school, so that, but that number, the five-hundred, that is staff-generated. That's not from the council, though.
And what about the additional five-hundred from the winery itself?
That's staff-generated.
I mean, I guess, you know, what you're talking about, and interestingly enough, last weekend, I did a three-night Airbnb in Paso Robles, and I visited Tin City, which I think you're referring to, in the Central Coast. And they do have a pretty cool area that was once an industrial tin manufacturing or producing area, that they've turned into a bunch of wineries, breweries, distilleries, eateries, you know, different things. And parking is kind of an issue there, but, you know, they've turned something into it as a destination. I think that's kind of what you're going at, Commissioner Rosine. And so I think that's what we, as a commission, evaluated a couple of years ago. That was ultimately declined by the council now. Is this a little less aggressive than that? Maybe so, especially with the double-five-hundred limit. Maybe eliminating one of those five-hundreds could, especially the one around the winery, could open us up for more businesses. Do we know by chance how many businesses that would open up if we eliminated the double-five-hundred and only kept it at schools?
David Blumenthal again. Mr. Chair, no, I don't have those numbers to say how many parcels could open up.
But would it be more than ten?
It could be more than ten, because going back to... Going back to the map from the school, the school blocks out about half of the IG zone, and so we're gonna open up the other half of the IG zone.
Great, thank you. I think for me, I would be supportive of removing the one around the winery to allow for more access to it, and kind of touching on what Commissioner Rosine is. I'm not sure if that's where you were going with it, but I can kind of build off of that, because it kind of eliminates the spot zoning question, which I think you've answered fairly, that it's not, but it kind of removes some of that away, because it, while it helps the winery, and that's kind of the discussion we're having. winery, and that's kind of the discussion we're having tonight, but it allows for more than one other, because as stated, if we go with the double zone, you're only allowing one other business the ability to do it. So that's kind of a fairness question. So I'll throw that out there, but I'm not sure if I have support from commissioners, and Commissioner Kleiman's got her hand up.
Me again. So I hate to disagree with Ms. Summerhill twice in one night, but my understanding of spot zoning has always been giving property rights, that the adjacent properties have either more rights or less. So that's my understanding of it. It's neither here nor there, I guess. But, and just to clarify for Commissioner Rosine, and I think you touched on this as well, the last time we reviewed this, it was more of what you're describing. It was to sort of change this area to become exactly what you both seem like you experienced on your visit there. And I know a number of other areas are doing that as well. But council, if I recall, rejected it because, number one, we were going into a general plan amendment, which of course has been delayed and delayed some more. But their sense was consistent with why I was a dissenting vote, which is that this was piecemeal and that we were trying to sort of shoehorn something into an area that needed to be looked at in a more comprehensive way. And to me, this is sort of rewarding, I wouldn't say bad behavior, but it's like, you know, ask for forgiveness, not permission. So they did something they weren't supposed to do, they were non-conforming, and then they go to the city and they're like, hey, help us become conforming. Well, there's a reason that we have zoning, and there's a reason that, you know, there's no, there's no wine and, you know, beer drinking opportunities in this area. And I really don't think that it makes sense to downplay the fact that Carden Hall is here, Pacific Christian is here, the Coast Community College is here, there's several churches, I noted, Viewpoint Church, Redemption Church. Again, this is why we have zoning, and it just doesn't make sense to me. I'll just say that again.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Kleiman. Commissioner Elmore?
Quick question. Mr. Mosher made a comment, maybe staff, you could elaborate, or so I'm clear, that if a winery was approved here, we would not have the ability to put another winery anywhere else in the city?
Thank you, David Blumenthal again. Yes, the code amendment currently before you is just the IG zone. So I think Mr. Mosher's comment is, is that we're not considering any other zones, so there would not be allowed a winery anywhere else, or wine tasting room elsewhere in the city. We do have other Type 2 licenses in the city. I do want to clarify that, but those are either office distribution points or retail sales, but that specific type of wine tasting room would be limited with the IG zone.
Any other commissioners before somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll move to deny the application.
Do I have a second? Does it sound...
Yeah, I'll second that.
Oh, I got a second. All right. I'll make an alternative motion, though, to approve it and to eliminate the 500-foot distancing of the winery itself, keep the 500-foot for the school. And again, this is just a recommendation to the council, so we'll see what the council takes up on it, but I'll make an alternative motion to approve with the removal, so it's not specific to the winery, it's more to the area. And I, just for the record, I was supportive at the time of the breweries, distilleries, wineries district in that area, so I'm not diverting from my opinion. I guess I'll be looking for a second myself.
I'll second.
Okay, so that is on the table for an actual vote, correct?
Correct. We would vote on the substitute motion, which got a second.
Yeah, call for that.
The motion carries four-two with Commissioner Kleiman and Rosine voting no.
Great. Thank you, guys. I know it's late, and that was another one that was interesting, and the council, I think, had a mixed opinion on it, too. So we'll let them make that ultimate decision, just as we did the last one. So I think we are up for staff and commissioner items. So item five, any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, I'll go to item six, report by the community development director, a request matters which planning commissioner member would like to be placed on a future agenda. Simone?
Thank you, Chair Wigan. So just a couple items. Next Tuesday is the city council meeting. They will be looking at and reviewing and considering a few items that came through the planning commission. One is the LCP cleanup amendments that were approved by the commission. Second item is the two-year extension of HOGS development agreement. And then we have the Newport Airport Village item, which went to the Airport Land Use Commission, and the Airport Land Use Commission found it inconsistent with the airport land use plan. So we're going to take an item to the city council next Tuesday to see if they have, if the council has any intention of overriding the Airport Land Use Commission. We are, for the planning commission, we go dark for the first part of August, and then we come back with you all on August 20th. We just hope and wish all of you have a safe and healthy break until we return August 20th. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Simone. And any commissioner requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Request for excused absences? Any requests? Okay. All right. We're adjourned.